Yeah. Pay for product though. I don't even know if there's tax on all food anymore.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the town of Lake Clark Shores, November 12th, regular town council meeting. Let's let me get my act together here. Sorry. It's been a very long, tough day. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Vice Mayor John Maples.
Here.
President Pro Tem Bridget Keating.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor Materio.
Here.
Councilmember Kristy Masbach.
Here.
Okay, can all rise here for a moment of silence. This evening, we want to remember Rizelda Zacharias. She was eighty-five years old. That's Yami Lamont's mother. She works for the police department. She's administrative assistants. And then Harriet Ross, any of you who have been a longtime resident in Lake Clark Shores knows Harriet. She lives over on Alpha Beta. I went to school with all of her children. She was quite the character, but I loved her. She was eighty-four years old. She was a resident here since nineteen seventy-nine. And then we have Palma Scolfo. Yes, this is Joe's aunt. Of she lived for ninety-two years. Those are good rape ages for everyone. And I'm gonna add one that I normally don't. Excuse me. We had to put down a family dog today. It's very difficult. Sorry. Thank you. May their memories all be eternal. Father Peter.
Let us pray. Oh heavenly father, as we begin this meeting, we ask for your wisdom. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights, and we implore your presence among us this evening. Guide us in our discussions and our decisions. Help us to seek what is best for all involved. As we draw near to the great American feast of Thanksgiving, we never want to lose sight of our gratefulness to you. Thank you for your faithfulness and provisions in our lives. We thank you for the gift of life, for the breath that sustains our lives, for the food of the serve that nurtures us, for the life-giving love of family and friends. We thank you for this community to which we belong, for our families, friends, and neighbors. We thank you for our brothers and sisters of all ages, all races, all nationalities and all faiths. Help us find healing in these days that lie ahead. Help us to see your image and likeness in ourselves and each other. May your love and mercy continue to dwell among us. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you, Father.
Okay. Let's move on to audience comments. Tim, I have a card here from you. Want to come up? Bill still in room?
Tim Daughtry, fourteen-ten Keller Road. First issue I'd like to bring up is the roads. So we paved all of Oak. We paved the whole area going down to the boat ramp. And all we've done over on Pine Tree side of Lake is done beta core intersection. I don't know what else to say. Something needs to be done with at least the intersections on Pine Tree Road. They're falling apart. Okay, something has to be done. Okay, and I don't know why we delay, 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 delay. Something needs to be done. The roads are falling apart over there. We have brought up dredging. When are we gonna move forward on that? When are we? Okay, Lake Worth Beach and Palm Springs are on ticket for a significant contribution to this because of the sewage bills. And we need to move forward and we need to move forward soon. The next issue is the sewers. Jen presented to this town survey, well, a petition with over nine hundred signatures for us for us to have a vote on whether we should have sewers, yes or no.
Can you raise it up?
I can do that. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm going to, okay, going to. So Jen presented a petition with over nine hundred signatures, which she was told that's what she needed to do to get a vote in this town. She did that. She did that some time ago, some time ago. And we have not moved forward. She was told to do something. She achieved what she achieved. She was told to do something and we were gonna respond to it by allowing a vote. We haven't. When is it going to happen? Okay, if you tell somebody to do something and you're gonna allow vote, do it. Don't tell her to do something and not do what you said you were gonna do. Okay, that's unacceptable. That's unacceptable to each and every one of you up there. Okay, should be, okay? She was told to do something. She did it, and now we haven't moved forward on it. And the last thing is the bridge. And I have a lot of anger about how this contract has progressed. Okay, we're six weeks in. And being generous, I've seen a week's worth of work done there. I don't care what anybody says. It's on schedule. We're happy with the contractor. Work is not proceeding. Okay, it is not proceeding. And there's more than enough playing to go around. Okay, way more than enough, okay? The engineering problem with it, contractor problem with it, and the way we're managing this contract is a problem. I'm a man who has over fifty years of experience doing project management, project management. I've worked for the Army Corps of Engineers. I've worked for the National Park Service. I've worked for a lot of major utilities in the eastern area of this country. And if I had a contract that has proceeded like this has, I'd be close to being thrown off the job. And I have to say, this is total incompetence how this has been handled, okay? We're six weeks in and we've had one week of work done to it. Okay, I go by there all the time. I watch was there. I watch the bodies there. This is a significant contract with significant money there. Bodies need to be there. Bodies need to be doing work. It's that simple, okay? And it's not getting done, okay? Somebody needs to light a fire under the contractor's butt and get them here and get the bodies here and get the work done. We had to be delayed because we have utilities under the bridge, okay? We knew that. Why wasn't that taken care of ahead of time? And now we have Florida Mango closed. This has become a life safety issue. Someone has a heart attack or a stroke, minutes count. Someone could die or be severely disabled. This is from someone who had a stroke three years ago. Time matters. Minutes matter. We've got Florida Mango shut down. We got Pine Tree Bridge shut down. Okay, we can't service the people of that area in our town properly with emergency services. We need to do something, and the way we've handled this so far, six weeks in, it's just a disaster, complete disaster.
All right, thank you, Tim. You've said that three times now. We get it.
Okay, and you need to get it, okay?
Are you a bridge builder?
Huh?
Are you a bridge builder? Are you a contractor for a bridge now?
I'm a builder. I'm a builder.
Okay, all right, thank you. We got the message. I appreciate all your comments. Where did Bill Murphy go? Bill, please come up here. I'm gonna put this up here for you. Thank you very much. I need some positive stuff right now.
See if I can read what my daughter wrote to say. Recently, I received an award from Solid Waste Authority for the Volunteer of the Year Solid Waste Authority twenty-twenty-two, but it was kept from giving it to me because of COVID. And then I had ten years certification, which is in that file that represented Lake Clark Shores and five hundred hours in Lake Sharks Shores. I was awarded for the work I've done here.
Very nice. So read one of those that they have given you for part of that on the record, please. Okay, this is a certificate of recognition presented to Bill Murphy, Lake Clark Shores, and grateful recognition for ten years of dedicated volunteer service from Linda Moreno, Community Service Volunteer Supervisor, Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County. Absolutely. Bill, you have been awarded the Tunnel Lake Clark Shores Volunteer of the Year too, haven't you? Yeah.
All of us, Eric?
Do you want all of us?
Yeah. Well, if you can come down, that'd be better.
Always.
He's being very modest because how much longer here hours he puts into the town is incredible, so.
Be nice. Don't be in here. All right. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Bill.
I need a favor. We'll talk later.
All right. Do we have any other audience comments? Yes, ma'am. I don't believe, well, you tell me. Can you hear her?
No, no, can we, a cordless mic? Yeah, we can bring a cordless.
There we go.
No, no.
They're gonna bring you a cordless mic.
No, it doesn't get on the recording. That's the reason.
Yeah, we have to have public.
Okay. I have so many complaints tonight. I don't know where to start. First of all, the this thing here in the middle, you all can hear great. Back here, I don't know how many of them can hear. I can't hear what they're talking about because half of the people don't talk into the microphone. And I'm here every month. I'd like to know what's going on with this town. But we don't get much information from you people. First of all, you have Pine Tree Lane closed. It's over, what? A month and a half now? When are they gonna start digging the bridge out and put the new one in? It shouldn't take a year and a half to do this.
It's not, it's not a year and a half.
I was, I was heard rumors that it's gonna take over a year.
No.
That's ridiculous.
I don't believe rumors that I don't start.
First of all, who has, who is the one that has the most control on this town? The mayor or the county or a town manager?
It's a strong manager, weak mayor, form of government.
I can't hear you good enough.
Strong manager, weak mayor, form of government.
It's me.
How can we get a list of rules of what's going on in this town? Do you have a list of rules of?
There's a charter. Yes, there is a charter.
I don't have a computer that I could go.
Well, I'm sure if you came here, they'll be happy to print it out for you and you'll be able to get it.
All right, I'd like to have it printed up and I'll come and pick it up one day.
Okay.
Excuse me, I gotta catch my breath.
I understand. I'm in the same mood tonight.
Well. I just lost my train of thought. I'm so, I'm so down. Oh, I know. Why do we have Dan Clark on our board?
Genevieve.
Put the mic up to your mouth.
Sorry, I'm just as bad as the rest of you. Why do we have Dan Clark on our board?
Dan is not on the board.
Well, you pay him every month to be a.
Dan is a consultant.
You mean there's no consultants that live in Florida? We have to have a man that lives in Seattle, Washington?
For what he's charging, any consultants that working in South Florida, he's working for a quarter of it.
Yeah, well, I think he made a lot of the problems. We, we had our own dock. Now it's open to the public. Why is that? That should be, belong to the town, not to the public.
That's because we received public funds.
I know, but that was a very bad judgment.
Well, it's.
You, you build a picnic.
Parks are the same way. The parks have received public funds and they're open to all of the public.
Why didn't you think of the seniors years ago and build a club for us?
I, that's, that's his decision. If he brings it to the council, it would be, it would be looked at.
Well.
But I would remind you that when we did build this building and we redid that building over there, there was a huge majority of people who were against that also. That was in two thousand and seven. The police department was literally wiped out by back-to-back hurricanes, and there was a third one. They technically were operating illegally. Storage of records was incorrect. There was a lot of other things going on at that time. That was actually under Joanne's watch. So there were people that didn't want that. I don't think there would, is or was anyone who's opposed to something of that nature.
Well.
There is a, there is a meeting place right here that's utilized for the seniors every Wednesday, third Wednesday, John?
Yeah, I know. I'm the one that formed it.
Okay, I'm.
I'm the one that set it up and then they.
I'm glad. I hear that it's very well attended and there's a lot of great speakers. That's an awesome.
Well, I have my own club now and I have a great group.
Okay.
Um, but my most thing I'm upset about is the sewers and the septic tanks. I went around and I rang doorbells. And I've had a lot of people in this town. And a lot of them are seniors. They don't have computers. They don't know what's going on in the town. We don't have a good communications with the people and the town. We should have some kind of a little newspaper that we could.
It does come out. It comes out quarterly.
Yeah, I know. You have, yeah, you have the gods too, which I'm the one that recommended that too.
It was a monthly to the.
Yeah, I have one here.
Yeah.
That's, we're spending all that money. Why can't you just put on plain white paper and and not spend so much money on papers like that? Half of the people don't even look at it because you don't give us town information. Unfortunately, I have a paper at home and I forgot it tonight. Years ago, we used to have our, all our things put in the newspaper.
The Coastal Observer.
What's that newspaper? The one I give you. The Coastal Observer. We don't have anything about our town in the paper.
I don't believe the Coastal Observer is actually in business any longer.
Oh, yes, it is.
Is it?
Oh, yes, it is.
They don't cover us. I, I don't know.
I know, because we're not, we don't invite them. I've asked them, why don't they come here? And they said, we have to invite them.
That's an invitation. They declined or I, they're not.
The one that I have, I'm gonna bring it to you, the next, next meeting and show you all the information. Because we don't know what's going on in this town. It's terrible. But anyway, we put in nine hundred and fifty-some signatures to have a meeting for our septic tank and sewers. Why haven't we had our meeting?
We did a charrette and it's.
No, you didn't do it. You had it in the daytime when people are working.
It was, it's on, it's on the TV. It's accessible to everyone twenty-four hours a day.
I can't go on the TV. I don't have a computer that I can watch all that stuff on the television.
It, Charlie, it's on the agenda to talk about that this evening.
You're not, you're not getting it through to the people in this town. You're not, you're not communicating.
There's a lot of, there's a wide variety of demographics in this town. And there are a lot of things that have done, been done over the past years to save money, reallocate dollars to places that we need it.
How come we have a fifty thousand dollar barbecue every year? And half of the people that come don't even live in our town.
That's not true either.
Oh, yes, it is. I've worked at it quite a few years.
I've been working that front door for probably twelve.
At the last meeting, did you get the people that came in, did you get them to pay that didn't live in the town?
Pardon me?
You have people come that didn't live in our town. Did any of them pay to come to our barbecue?
They can pay. They.
They can't pay. Did anybody pay? No.
Twenty thousand dollars in donations.
And most of that barbecue is covered by donations.
We got twenty thousand dollars in donations.
I, I think I better stop. That's enough. Thank you.
I'm just trying to help answer your questions.
I gotta calm down. I mean.
Okay, I agree.
I'll be back next month with more problems.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How's the new house going?
House is going great. Morning Mill, seventy-seven hundred Pine Tree Lane and seventy-five thirty-one Pine Tree Lane. First of all, thank you guys, everybody up here. There's a lot of criticism going on in the town right now, but you know, nobody ever stops to say thank you for what you do. This is a selfless job. I think everybody can say thank you once in a while for everything you do, including the police department. Everyone's shorthanded. We know that. There's a lot of projects going on in town right now, but let's be a little courteous. I mean, thank you goes a long way. And hey, call up and say, hey, what's going on with this and what's going on with that? It's, it's really that simple. I spoke with the town manager the other day. We had a great conversation. It's that simple. Stop coming up here and just being rude to these people. It's not fair to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, just for the record, we have no control on what's going on on Florida Mango. We did try to get that delayed. We tried very hard to get that fixed, but guess what? County said.
No.
Yeah, this is what we're gonna do and thanks for stopping. So, all right, any other comments? Yeah, it'll, it'll pass. It's only two weeks, but that's what they say, so we don't control.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, before we move on.
Yeah.
I know each of us have a card with our cell phone on it, Genevieve. I'm gonna leave mine up here. And I'll bring one down to you also, but I'm sure my fellow council members and mayor and vice mayor will agree that you have access to all of our cell phones. We'd be happy to talk to you directly anytime to discuss these issues with you one-on-one on your time. I'll come down and speak to you after the meeting, okay?
Do we have anything? What do we have?
Yeah, so there's Pat Boyer. She's asking, or no, sorry, she's saying, yes, the intersection at Pine Tree and Mediterranean has holes in it. It definitely needs paving. Then Carol Shaheen said, is the three-minute timing clock in effect?
Eli, could you speak up, please?
Yes, so Pat Boyer says, yes, the intersection at Pine Tree and Mediterranean has holes in it. It definitely needs paving. Then Carol Shaheen said, is the three-minute timing clock in effect? And there's Jennifer Chenofsky that would like to speak. I will unmute her. Hold on, I think she's offline right now. She's not online right now. She wanted to talk about the septic to sewer, but maybe you can let her talk if she's back and.
We're gonna be covering that in, in, Charlie has information regarding that. It is on the agenda. There are more paving projects in the pipeline. And if, if no one has not noticed, for the past two years or any of the time in my five, ten years, I never implemented three-minute clock ever. Everybody's free to talk. I'm very open like that. After comments, there have been many times where people say, can I speak? And I always think it's important to let the people speak. So, okay?
Yes.
That's good. We're good?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have a motion for approval of agenda, please.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for consent?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here is, okay, we have no presentations, no quasi-judicial proceedings, no public hearing. So we are going to move on to unfinished business. And we are first going to talk about the discussion on a new town branding. Elliot, please come forward.
I have a new grandchild named Elliot as well.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. She's not so new, but I love her.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Elliot Cohen. I was asked to come here in light of the conversation that you were having over the course of several meetings about a tagline and branding for the town to sort of provide some information as to what that process might look like and what are the, what are the pluses for a, for a branding campaign? There we go. Just by way of information, our firm does municipal branding and communications for cities and towns in South Florida, Miami-Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, also the Gulf Coast, Collier County, and next city Naples and other cities around the state of Florida. That's our experience. We work with several public sector cities and towns. The list is up there. I won't go through it. But we have extensive experience. We also have experience in the private sector as well with everything from education, schools, hospitals, law firms, restaurants, and et cetera. So just by way of information as to who I am. I also have been working with the town for several years on the town's communications, which includes the.
That's ironic.
Which includes the, the monthly electronic newsletter, the monthly printed newsletter. We do the Shorelines magazine for you. We do the annual reports. When appropriate, we do the legislative, the pamphlets for your legislative priorities for the year. Help you with hurricane communications, whatever, whatever this, whatever the town needs, we, we have been providing you for for several years. So the importance of branding. So what is town branding? So town branding is about strategically creating and sharing your unique identity to attract residents, businesses, and visitors. It highlights what makes Lake Clark Shore special, whether it's the lake, natural beauty, cultural vibrance, business-friendly environment. A clear, appealing brand invites people to experience and invest in Lake Clark Shores. It builds pride, strengthens connections, encourages growth by attracting new residents and businesses that align with your values. In essence, branding essentially creates the town's appeal, promotes economic growth, growth, and fosters a stronger community identity. Why is branding important for a municipality such as Lake Clark Shores? Well, town branding is the process of strategically creating and sharing the town's unique identity, and it increases the appeal to residents. Effective branding goes beyond just a logo or a tagline. It establishes a distinct image and it reflects who you are as a community and what you aspire to be. By capturing those economic and cultural strengths, town branding helps you stand out among the other neighboring municipalities. I know there was a conversation about taglines. What is the difference between branding and a tagline? So branding is the complete identity and perception of the town, reflecting your values, your visuals, your overall message. It's how you present yourselves to the world, showing what makes you unique and why people should want to live and work here. Within the brand, the tagline plays a key role. In short, it's a memorable phrase that reinforces the town's identity, instantly capturing its essence. While the brand shapes the bigger story, the tagline serves as a quick, impactful reminder of who you are. Together, they create a cohesive and inviting image that resonates with residents, attracts businesses, and draws visitors. Town branding also has an economic impact. So there is the, there's the, the branding that would attract people to live, work, and play here, but it also has an economic impact. It attracts business investment and growth, draws companies by showcasing the town as a desirable business location. It helps you stand out from similar communities. It gives you pride in place and specifically a new branding for the town would also give the Business Development Board a critical tool that it can use to try and encourage interested businesses towards your town to look at your, to look at your community for future investment. So what are the core elements of a branding of a, of a town such as Lake Clark Shores? Visual identity. Visual identity gives the town a cohesive look, uses logos, it uses colors, uses designs that embody the town's essence. It's how it is recognized at a glance and what sets it apart visually from the other towns in Palm Beach County and beyond. A strong visual identity builds familiarity, reinforces the brand, and creates a lasting impression and sharing consistency across all interactions. A brand story is basically the narrative that brings the town's identity to life, capturing your values, your rich heritage, future ambitions for the town. It tells people not just what the town is, but what it stands for, and it's a compelling brand story that fosters connections and pride in the community. The tagline, by comparison, is a brief, memorable phrase that captures the unique appeal and promise of the brand. It's the essence of what it stands for, delivered in just a few words. The role of the tagline in the branding, it's essentially because it conveys the town's core message in a memorable, concise way. It's more than just words. It creates an emotional connection with people. An effective tagline is short and memorable and reflects the brand identity. Now, what is a tagline without the overall branding that it comes from? Well, when you're rebranding a town, developing the branding is the first and essential step because it establishes the clear cohesive identity. It captures the the town's unique character and strengths and aspirations. The brand encompasses values, visual elements, a narrative that residents with both residents and visitors. Without that foundation, a tagline risks being generic or being misleading, lacking the authentic connection needed to reflect the personality and appeal of the community. The branding is what shapes the direction and the message of the tagline, ensuring that it becomes a powerful, memorable phrase that encapsles the town's true identity and vision. So how do we get a branding? How do we get a tagline? What's the process? So it's go it goes through several steps. The first step is research and discovery. You talk to key lawmakers such as yourselves. You talk to staff. You talk to community stakeholders, and most importantly, you talk to residents. Brands have to be authentic. They have to be grounded in what the community truly is. And through focus groups, surveys, market analysis, you get a clear picture of what Lake Clark Shores is, what it's what it's 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 personality is because that's really what has to be the foundation for the brand. Once you have that clear picture, you define the brand identity, you outline the vision, the values, the core attributes that you want to highlight. You develop the visuals and the messaging, colors, taglines, logos, slogans, visual assets. And then the last part is the engagement in the rollout. Branding is not gonna be doing any good if it just sort of sits on a shelf somewhere here in town hall. You have to engage your stakeholders. You have to implement PR campaigns, and then you measure the response that you get. One of the most important steps in a branding campaign is involving the community because the community is what you are communicating. You're communicating your town's values. You're communicating what makes Lake Clark Shore special, and nobody knows what make what makes Lake Clark Shores special more than the people that live here. So when it comes to community outreach, the authenticity requires the community import input, and it's essential to include the residents. You do that through ambassadors. You do that through focus groups, and you incorporate the community in every step of the process. I wanted to give you a couple of successful examples that may sort of resonate as far as as far as Lake Clark Shores is is concerned. So the first couple of examples are a rebranding campaign from the for the for the municipality itself, reaching out, trying to get people to move to the municipality. In Lakeway, Texas, so Lakeway, Texas is just outside of Austin. And I tried to pull examples of small communities that are sort of just outside of larger cities. It's just outside of Austin. It positioned itself as a scenic lakeside community on Lake Travis with a focus on outdoor activities, high quality living, and family oriented amenities. The outcome of their rebranding campaign was the promotion of their parks, their lake access, their outdoor recreational areas. They promoted promoted themselves as an upscale residential option just outside an urban area. The community became a desirable residential and recreation area for professionals that were seeking a balance between work and a lakeside lifestyle just outside of the city of Austin. Safety Harbor, Florida. Safety Harbor, Florida is just outside Tampa. It would promote itself as a waterfront oasis with a small town feel, emphasizing wellness, community, and outdoor recreation near a larger city. Oh, sorry. There you go. As soon as it focuses up. The result of the Safe Harbor rebranding campaign, they attracted families, professionals, and wellness focused businesses, boosted the local economy, and made it a desirable waterfront community just outside of Tampa. That's on the personal side. Now, when you're rebranding, Lake Clark Shores happens to be in a unique and a very special position at the moment. If you are going to rebrand the town, then you your target audience is going to be the general public, trying to get people to want to move here and live here. You also have a CRA, and you have a CRA that has reached a maturity level that now is ready to also take on more of a campaign for business attraction. You can rebrand using the CRA as well, in which case the target audience wouldn't be the general public. It would be business investment. Rosemount, Minnesota, used a rebranding campaign for just that purpose. They marketed itself as an industrial logistics hub with easy access to major highways, but with fewer regulatory hurdles than Minneapolis, which it which was is its neighboring city. The economic impact was it attracted manufacturing, warehousing, logistics, and businesses by emphasizing low fees and a business friendly policy in comparison to its larger urban neighbor. The rebranding led to significant growth, new jobs, and increased tax revenue without the red tape often associated with Minneapolis. Leander, Texas, a similar story, positioned itself as a business friendly alternative to Austin, Texas. With simplified zoning and redevelopment process, they also experienced an economic boom as a result of their rebranding effort. Closer to home, Sanford, Florida. Sanford, Florida revitalized as a business friendly community with an emphasis on an easy access to transportation, especially for small and medium sized enterprises. And their economic success story included low regulatory barriers and central location near major highways attracted major businesses. They're just outside of Orlando. And then the last example is Lake Nona, Florida. Lake Nona, Florida is also just outside of Orlando. They rebranded, marketed themselves as an innovative community with a focus on health and wellness, positioned itself as a smart city without Orlando's bigger regulatory complexities. They also enjoyed an economic boon as a result of that. So just to wrap up, you've got two different tracks that you could follow when it comes to rebranding and taglines. One is the community aspect, your enhanced community identity. It you've got community engagement and participation as part of it. You you can have an improved safety perception if you have a rebranding campaign and you and a boost in residential satisfaction and stability. And then if you go the economic route, you've got attraction to business and investment, rises, a rise in property values, support for small businesses, and higher tax revenues for public improvements. I hope that was helpful in your discussion when you discussed.
R guru.
There you go.
Can you take some questions from council?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, who wants to go first? John, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll jump in here. Um, question for you. So number one, can we get a copy of that presentation? That'd be super helpful, please.
Very hard to follow.
Yeah.
You have it.
And then you mentioned a couple of examples, which was fantastic about the rebranding. Did any of them through their rebranding come out with a tagline? From any of that, like, for example, Lakeway, Texas, what was their tagline after the rebranding?
I don't know their taglines, but I know that a tagline is always part of the process. So.
Right.
It's the it's the rebranding. It's the logo, and then the tagline is always critical because it's just a couple of words that reinforce it.
Right.
I can get them for you.
Yeah, if you if you would just share that just to see what came out of that, because I feel like that example fits great with what we're doing. And I think the timing of this is awesome because the CRA is going through a park master plan, which kind of a vision of kind of what's next and how that's gonna be developed. And then this branding and tagline and the whole deal kind of fits simultaneously with that big vision, big plan and growth for the town and the future of the town. So I think the timing is perfect and exciting. You know, excited to see what the town and everything, everyone contributes and what what comes out of that. So it should be fun. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Now, has this ever been, use a hybrid? Do you have to use one or the other?
One or the other of.
Community redevelopment and growing in business, economic business.
You can do one, the other, or both because they're two completely distinct target audiences. If you're if you're going to rebrand the town, then the the target audience is the general public. You're trying to attract families. You're trying to attract people to move here. If it's doing under the umbrella of the CRA, then your target audience is going to be what whatever whatever you choose to be your target audience. It could be it could be developers. It could be small businesses, whatever you want to, you know, trying to attract. But you can do both.
Thank you.
An example of excellent branding is when we go to the League of Cities meetings and they they call the the roll call and and they call the and everyone else just says here, right? And then they call the town of Gulf, and the entire delegation yells, four! Now, that's branding.
It is, but it's not their tagline. They're one of my clients. It's not their tagline.
They were nervous. That was a ethics commission meeting.
That's Christine.
And the the unique thing about our CRA is we have a residential component. So most CRAs don't don't have that. We have a residential component. So we actually can combine it both or start with a CRA. So whatever you guys. Right. So I would like to, if I can, discuss this with Elliot and see what pricing I can get for an option or two on this. This is if I just need a consensus to see if.
We need a do we need a motion?
No.
You can do it by consensus. Yeah, I'm I would say continue moving forward and bring what you got to us, and let's look it over and we'll do the whole process, bringing in the residents and taking the council and, you know, whole big ball of wax, involve everybody in it.
That's good. I'm I had a handout that I don't know if did they get the?
No.
The thing that, okay.
I I saved it on the computer. I didn't know it was.
Okay, it's it's a more detailed process, so you have that just so you have a more a more in depth idea of what of what the process would look like.
You'll make your presentation accessible.
Yeah, we have. We have. We'll send it out tomorrow.
Yep, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Item B is authorization for close on the property located at seventy seven thirty West Lake Drive. Charlie?
I could start on it. Back in.
I know that's a legal issue.
Yeah, back in September, we had the homeowners come in from seventy seven thirty West Lake, and they were asking for a lien reduction, and we reached out to them after because there was questions about dates and when the fines should 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 start and stop, and we have not heard back from them. They have some open permits. So we can start the foreclosure process because I I don't want to wait for the residents to have to have to live with an eyesore for the, you know, for just for that. It's been there for years now. So I'd like to start the foreclosure process. It's allowed after three months of filing a lien. You guys are authorized the funds to start that, and the code board would actually do the legal. In their.
This is a code board recommendation.
It it hasn't gone to the code board yet.
Didn't I read this?
Or it did.
No, no, it's not. It's gonna be on the December fourth.
On the, okay, that's what I saw.
Yeah, it hasn't gone there yet. So but obviously, you would authorize the funds to be expenditure for that for legal fees to start the foreclosure process.
Charlie, do you have anything to add for us?
Just to let you know that back in twenty twenty two, the loan balance on that property was two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars, and they are ahead of our code enforcement. So I cannot sit here today and tell you that you would recoup in the foreclosure the full amount of the liens because there are prior loan amounts due on the property, and they will have priority over the code enforcement.
Satisfied?
Yes, but that should not be a basis to not move forward.
Right.
When I first read this memo, I it's I I saw, you know, they came into compliance on one item in September, another item in in August, and another item in twenty twenty one. It looked to me like they were putting the, you know, good faith effort into fixing the issues. And then Joe mentioned that they have not been returning phone calls. There's one open item, the roof, the roof, I think.
Yes.
So they, when they were here in front of us two months ago, they seemed very earnest, and and they have moved forward expeditiously once they actually were able to take possession of the property. So it's it's sort of surprises me that they've not been returning your phone calls.
Is there an issue structurally with that roof or why it hasn't? Has it been in progress with the inspections or?
We shouldn't comment on the actual issues with the permit, but there's.
No, I was just wondering if it's been sitting like that for a long time. So.
Yeah.
When something like that happens or.
There's usually comments, and they have to satisfy the comments. And when you don't satisfy the comments, the the permit doesn't get passed.
Okay. So you need a motion from the council to.
Yes.
Proceed with foreclosure.
To authorize.
Right.
Foreclosure. Do we have a?
Does that it? Does that mean that Charlie begins immediately, or he gives? There's a little grace period there?
We still have to get the approval from the code board, so it won't be immediate, but.
Meeting's in December?
Correct.
December fourth.
December fourth.
And just to be clear, I think in September, we were trying to locate some dates that because I think when they were here, the brother and sister, there was a a little bit of confusion of when they took ownership of the property and when the liens and all the fines started. And so there was some discrepancy there that they felt like, hey, we didn't even own the property. We didn't get that situated. I think I spoke with Joe, and he said that he's been reaching out and trying to iron out some of those dates, but they haven't been responsive. So we still don't have a strong date on any of that ownership. Is that is that still?
We have some dates, but there's not a working party on the other side. We don't have any communication on the other side. So this is why I'm saying, let's start with this process. That doesn't mean it ends up with this process. It means we start the process. They get notified legally that we're starting this process, and sometimes they resolve it, and sometimes they don't resolve it.
Were they notified that this was on the agenda tonight?
I had a call into them.
It's a matter of policy. We're taking the next steps per.
This is the appropriate thing.
Recommendation.
This is the appropriate thing for staff and the town attorney. We think it's the appropriate thing. Just imagine living there for several years, and every house should be lived in. It should have. It should not be abandoned, and me and eyesore.
Just I have a follow up question. Joe, so once we start the process here, a foreclosure, the fines and different things of that nature cannot be reduced at that point. We are in the process, and the only way to get that addressed is they have to pay those fines in order to, or whatever they need to meet in order to move us to stop the foreclosure process. Just because we start the process doesn't mean we're going to foreclose on the process. Is that correct? If they pay the fines and meet the need or whatever is due?
You always have the ability to consider a reduction in the in the lien.
At any time.
At any time.
Okay.
Once the process begins, there's always the possibility of a negotiated settlement. But realize the property owner is not the only party that's going to be involved because this property has a reverse mortgage on it.
So there's a bank involved as well?
A mortgage company.
That's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
For the town attorney to foreclose the property located at seven seven three zero West Lake Drive upon a decision by the Code Enforcement Board to foreclose.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here's five zero.
Thank you. We will keep you up to date on that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Item C, twenty twenty five legislative priorities.
Last month, we had our lobbyist here, Mr. Pinsky, and he's here again. Say hello, Mr. Pinsky. And.
I invited Mr. Pinsky tonight to help the council understand where we stand, and I will have some comments after Mr. LaBello has done his.
Good, good. So he said, and he advised us to start the legislative process of our priorities for two thousand twenty five. The the session for the state doesn't start until March, but it's never too early to start. So I have an email, a memo here saying what was our priorities in two thousand twenty four, which was dredging, also known as vacuuming. Bridgette likes to call it vacuuming, which I agree with her because it's not really dredging the lake. It's really vacuuming the stuff on top of the lake. We are also looking for septic to sewer conversion money. And Richard did mention at the last meeting, which is so important, that that those. that, that those monies are very competitive for septic to sewer and dredging and vacuuming. So if you're not totally supportive of these projects, that free money will go to other communities. So just wanted to mention that on the record. So I started a list here and again, we can talk about these, these items and then we can talk about other items next month and we can add to them at any time. But, uh, the first item I'd like to discuss is that annexation issue. We have an enclave in town. Um, it's called Edgewater Park. An enclave is basically of, of an area of land that's surrounded by another municipal, within a municipality that's unincorporated. So that Edgewater Park is in unincor, unincorporated Palm Beach County, but it's surrounded by the town. And what happened was it's not exactly surrounded because there's a little piece of it that's on Florida Mango, which is a county road. So what we did a few years ago, the, with the help of Mr. Pinsky, is we went up to the state and the state through the legislation process can say what an enclave is. So they declared Edgewater Park an enclave. So they're an enclave forever. So after that process, it should just go to the county and we should have an internal local agreement, talk about services, which we did with the county. They, staff agreed that would, should be a smooth transfer into the town. And when we got to the vote, they pulled it from the consent and they said, uh, we should have a vote on that, which is not required by Florida statutes. So we would like to look into changing, uh, that power that the county has right now. And I'm not talking Palm Beach County, any county, um, that they, they have to take it in and changing the wording to shall instead of a may on enter into, in a local agreement with the municipality. So that's the first item that I'd like to have Richard work on. He's actually working on it already, but, uh, we'd like to continue that endeavor. So does anybody have any questions?
Are you able, I know we received a memo, but can you elaborate on some of the services that are received by that enclave?
Oh, it, it, it doesn't, that came up a lot and it really doesn't matter. So I got to put that on the rec, record that they can get no services as long as it's an enclave. But, but of course they get services. They use our parks, they use our, uh, police department. We drive through there, we patrol there because we have to go from one side to the other. They come to our community events. So they're, they're driving in our roads. They're using our, they're using all our infrastructure that's immediately adjacent to there and they can't go anywhere else. So it, it makes total sense for enclaves to be annexed into towns. And other communities, uh, such as counties like Broward have been very proactive on getting rid of their enclaves because they think it's just good business. So there's other cities that are looking into this language change and, um, Richard's already started the process. Like I said, then I'd like to make sure you guys are all on board.
Does anybody in Tallahassee consider this to be a controversial idea?
Well.
Is there another side to the story?
There's always another side to the story. Because some people believe you should always vote, that, that will come up. But that's, that's the major big issue. So.
Well, I'd say we move ahead on that one.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
Any other questions?
All right. As you know, we're going through the master plan for, um, for our three parks on Forest Hill Boulevard and we'd like to look at, um, funding opportunities. Firdap has been out there. That's a state funded, uh, park, um, grant system where the, the first $50,000 is 100% free. And then after that, up to, um, it's 7525. And I think it's up to 225,000, but things have changed. So like, like I said, I haven't used it in a while and actually they've reduced fundings in, in the past. And I don't know if you heard, the state is always talking about in two or three years that they're going to have budget issues. So I think we should start looking at our opportunities for, for parks. So that would be another priority that we would give Richard to see what's our options out there on getting help or assistance in any parks.
When you say 7525, is that 75 and we're matched by 25?
Yes. Yes. Uh, it's, it's on the good side and that's, we got that on the pickleball court. So that we, we, we got a 7525 grant.
I thought the CRA was paying for that.
That the CRA is paying for that, um, but we can always get grants to help us to reduce that.
Okay.
So the, the, the plan is usually you can't, you know, I don't want to say you can't get money for a plan, but usually you pay for the plan and then you sell it and you, you, you say, I want park equipment or something like that and you go for a grant, just like the pickleball court and they sometimes fund it or they don't. It's competitive. So it's, you have to have a good grant application and a good lobbyist to, to, um, but Firdap is something, but there's other grant opportunities, federal, state, but just want to review it.
And, and real quick question, um, are we ranking these in the level of importance for him to be working on and time committed to each different project? Or are we giving him a list of wants and needs and, uh, just seeing what he can get? Or what's the, what's, how are we structuring this? Cause I, I mean, cause I would like to have road paving and swells at the top of the list, money for that, for the following budget year to make sure the money is there to be able to get that piece done. And, and, and it looks, I mean, it looks like the list is starting to get extensive. So I just want to make sure, how are we structuring the level of importance of all these different priorities for this session?
It, it's your legislative priority. So yes, you can put, you can tell the, your lobbyist basically what's your highest priority. And obviously we, we still like to look for, um, keep looking for dredging. There's, there's been some discussion with, um, some of the vendors out there that you don't actually look for the money for the, the millions of dollars. You look for the plan first and then, you know, the, then you look for the money. So there's all kinds of discussion, which Richard will figure out on, uh, how we can get money for dredging. And obviously there is the vendor out there that the person that did it, AT&amp;T's subcontractor. So we're always looking for, for ways to get money from them also. And septic to sewer, again, um, you know, there's, there's, there's 100% to 10, 50%. There's all, I've seen it all out there. Um, Broward County worked with the, the state and they came up with a plan where it's free. It's exactly costs nothing for the, get the infrastructure in the ground for septic to sewer. They just have to pay for the hookup fee and they basically funded that over an interest free loan and they got a grant for that. So it costs like $25 a month to, for their septic to sewer project. It's, it's mandatory. So they have to hook up to it, but, uh, I think it's a state of the art. Richard and I have been discussing this one also. We, we'd like to, um, approach the county with that one too, to start looking into, um, what they did in Broward County. So that's just a list to start. Um, you guys can add, subtract.
Go first. Well, that's, I sit in this chair for a few more months. Richard, please come forward. No, it's okay. Well.
Mayor Commissioners, Richard Pinsky.
Yes, thank you. We're more than likely going to get, we can have a lot of asks. We've been asking and asking and asking. We're likely going to get one ask. We're going to get one thing that we ask for. So we should be considering the most important thing. Probably the most important thing to the town of Lake Clark Shores is the lake and the vacuuming of the lake. Now we do have, and, uh, what, what was the timeframe for that? That you were saying that we'll find out about that grant possibly?
Yeah, you, you, the, um, you endorsed, uh, as a commission, you endorsed submitting a, um, a water quality improvement grant from Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And, uh, you put in for a no match, uh, $10 million project to clean up the results of the most recent sewer spill. That should be announced. The deadline was, uh, was in August, I mean, August 1st. So you, that should be announced definitely before the session. So I'm guessing towards the end of December, maybe first part of January, we should know.
Okay. And I have reached out to our new state representative and we also have a new senator as well. So I, yes, and we've invited them here to come and talk to us before session begins. They're up there. Well, Ms. Tendrich is up there right now for newly elected officials. She's in Tallahassee or on her way. But we want them to understand the importance of the, the lake is really our centerpiece. This was thrust upon us really. So that doesn't preclude us from receiving a grant and then also receiving funding, matching dollars, however that will work, to get additional dollars to cover more areas. So help, help teach us on that one.
Okay, sure. Um, first, your, your manager, uh, is doing the right thing. You did say, um, I did suggest you prioritize and that was the point of tonight's agenda. It was for you to prioritize and I'm, I'm assuming that's why your manager put it on the agenda because he really believed me when I said they really need to prioritize. I, I gave you a memo and I'll get to the answer, but I gave you a memo. And, and this comes out every, you know, every, every cycle, every two years. So this is from the speaker, the last page is from the Senate president. But, um, the reordering of the House, uh, is taking a, a, a unique. Each speaker likes to put their, their, their thumbprint, thumbprint or their, 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 their legacy on their term. So what speaker, incoming speaker Danny Perez did is in setting this committee structure up that he wants to set up, um, the very first thing that he says is that we're no longer how, going to have an appropriations committee, meaning how are we going to spend, but we're going to have a budget committee, meaning how are we going to live within a budget? And followed by, oh, by the way, member projects are through the roof and they're out of control. And so when he, instead of just releasing, here's how I want to set up the committee structure, he opens up with, let me tell you about no more appropriations, how we're going to budget and, um, and what we have to rein in to live within our needs. So.
Richard, I'm sorry to cut you off. Just real quick, is, was that good for us? Because we got a freshman legislator going to Tallahassee and if there's no member projects, then potentially we have the opportunity to get. No, am I thinking wrong or thinking?
No, you're, you're, you're spot on. I'm trying to think how to politically correct answer that question.
I might be not being politically correct.
You're spot on. Uh, you're going down the right road and, uh, yes, uh, your newly elected representative, uh, Tendrich is on her way to Tallahassee. It's where they indoctrinate them and they become politicians that used to be regular citizens. But, uh, this is going to be a tough year because you do have a freshman House member. Also, the freshman member is going to be facing an 86 member Republican majority. So you have a Democrat freshman House member. And even though you may have an experienced, uh, county commissioner, going to Tallahassee to be your Senator, who was in the House, um, nonetheless, facing an overwhelming Republican majority in the Senate. So I won't use any baseball analogy about how many strikes you have against you, but you are spot on that this is going to be an uphill battle. To the mayor's point, yes, you're going to get one item and that's like one item. So what is that one item going to be? And, um, and that, it's not like Lake Clark Shores is going to get a couple of three things. So we have to sort of face reality and say, okay, what is that number one thing? Roads, uh, the legislature is moving roads into five-year work plans. So, and I've said it before and this, uh, the mayor knows, uh, you've got to get on the Palm Beach County TPA, whatever project you want. Uh, we're very fortunate getting money for Pine Tree Bridge. But that's changing and that's going more into the F dot grant program. So you've got to get on the TPA five-year work program. Once you're on that, I can then move that item up and make it a legislative instantaneous, uh, request. But you got to get on the five-year work program first. Firdap, you missed October 14th. No, you didn't miss, I shouldn't say it. There was an October 14th deadline. So the Florida Recreation Development and Parks Grant, Firdap, uh, get, has been fully funded for the last probably four years, five years maybe, uh, but you have to get in. So whatever project you're thinking about for parks right now, uh, it's going to be an application for October, which would be the 26, uh, funding cycle. But you got to get in, uh, and they are looking towards, um, handicap disabled, you know, access types of projects to upgrade parks. And they want to make sure it's something regional. But you, you know, when Elliot comes up with a good brand, I'm sure that'll be a good selling point of how you are a, a great, uh, outdoor parks and rec community. And then, so that takes us down to what the mayor's question, and I'm finally getting to the answer. And that is if you, if you were going to put up any money, 100,000, I don't know what the resources are and I'm glad I'm not sitting on that side of the, of the dais. But, uh, let's say you had 100,000 dollars and you're only going to get one item. Do you want to put that towards cleaning your lake that you live by and your whole community surrounds? Or do you want to put that 100,000 dollars towards some future septic? So you've got to figure out where is the best way you want to spend that money? If you have to spend money and probably if you're asking the legislature, you're going to be having to put up money. So that's a very long way of saying narrow it down. We've got a couple of strikes against us on who our sponsors are going to be. And, uh, you're only going to get one item. What is the most important thing for the quality of life in Lake Clark Shores?
Thank you, Richard, for that explanation. Do you want to test? Okay. I just want to say if I, from the information that we have presented, had a choice in picking what that one thing would be, I think sometimes things come up that are an emergency situation and what has happened with these two horrific sewage leaks is one of those to me. And if we're going to go up and ask for money and there's that slim chance, this slim chance that we might get it, that the dollars for that lake remediation, the vacuuming, whatever we are, um, going to have access to would be my priority for this legislative, um, cycle.
Yeah. So, uh, let me go back to Commissioner Maples for a moment, uh, because he had another good point on the question. That's all budget. That's all money. That has nothing to do from a policy perspective when you're talking about, um, state statute. So those, that's an entirely different, like he didn't, there's, there's nothing in here about, you know, I'm, 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 I don't, I don't want certain type of legislation. So so if you have limited funds to spend, uh, how can you increase your income to the town? Cause there's only two ways, cut costs or, or increase revenue. And what you've just suggested on the annexation of that enclave is an easy way to bring some money in. It's a state statute. You're not doing a local bill because there are probably another dozen or so cities around the state that, that are trying to do the same thing. So you have a state statute that now, uh, will, will help the town that has a very good likelihood of passing, that has nothing to do with the money part of it. So when you're forming your legislative ask, you may have, you know, what's your one item you're going to get for money? But you may have one, two, three, four, five, you know, policy issues that you can do that also are victories and wins and, and moves the town forward.
Thank you.
And last year we had an item that got all the way till the very end, till the veto pin came out. So is this dredging thing likely to survive all the way to the end? I mean, there's, you know, there's different biases up there and there's different, what's something might be in favor this season that wasn't in favor last legislative session?
Yeah. Uh, great question. And, um, and to the manager's point, we have to call it vacuuming. We don't dredge. There's a very good chance, uh, that it would make it all the way to the end. Again, um, we've got to be thinking about who the sponsor is going to be. Uh, we haven't figured that piece out yet. Um, you know, you don't want to, I don't want to say that Representative, elect Tendrich couldn't do it. And I don't want to say Senator Mack couldn't do it. Uh, Mac Bernard rather, Siggen couldn't do it, but, um, if we are turned down by DEP and don't get anything from the grant because we're not putting up any money, then yes, we want to shift that into a legislative ask right away. Who we get to do that, I think is still something that strategically we have to, we have to work out. And then I think there's a case because the governor looks at and has looked at regional issues, and this is certainly a regional issue. Uh, and it's certainly a water quality issue that the governor, uh, has cared about. So this has a good, you know, a good case. Uh, there was a public comment earlier about. There was a public comment earlier about Lake, Lake Worth Beach. Lake Worth Beach has not gotten any money. Lake Worth Beach has not asked for any money yet. They're contemplating a legislative ask for the same sewer spill remediation.
And what about Palm Springs? Because they were mentioned.
I don't know about Palm Springs.
Is there an insurance issue with those?
They're suing the contractor. There's a lawsuit.
Okay. Lake Worth Beach is.
Yes. And one more answer for Commissioner Maples. I can't help it. I mean, he, 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 he's asking good stuff. Think of me as a slave in a good way. I mean, I work for you. You can give me 25 things to ask for. You can keep me busy all the time. That's what I do. So you don't have to worry about, you know, the meter running. You play, you pay me a flat fee. And so load me up.
And we don't have to come up with anything tonight, but this is on our radar, things that we need to quickly.
You could probably put it off another month, but you, but they're going to be committee meetings start December 2nd. Committee week one, committee week two is the following week. Then we have two weeks in January, three weeks in February. I mean, things are going to start popping. So you're, you want to get stuff in particularly on the policy side. So if we're talking about those enclaves, and I forget who asked the question. Oh, Commissioner Masbach. The legislature has a statute that they passed that says we do not like enclaves and we want to do away with enclaves. So the legislature, it's not controversial at all. They've already made their policy statement. They want to get rid of enclaves. And when we passed this bill, it was unanimous on the floor and unanimous on the Senate floor.
That's an easy ask. It's easier than most. It's not, nothing's easy.
Can I lower the bar so it makes me look good? Should I?
With the dredging.
Vacuuming.
If we, the vacuuming.
We're on board with vacuuming.
With the vacuuming, we get, we happen to get funding. Then we made our way to the governor's pen. Would it hurt us if we haven't made a commitment? I heard you last, say last time, they were looking for some kind of commitment. We accepted the sewer site. Would that hurt us? Would that make it more likely that they veto it? Or is that something that is totally separate?
Again, I am not where you are and, and I'm happy I am not where you are because you have some tough decisions to go. You know, there, there are policy issues about environment, stewards of the environment, whatnot. But it does, I'll answer it this way. You're not ready to ask for septic sewer. You have something a thousand times more important in front of you. So why would you declare a position on an issue that only will make somebody mad? Why would you do that? You have, you have something far more important and I would never let go of that until DEP, AT&amp;T, somebody comes in and helps. And that's where your focus should be. In my opinion, you're the elected official.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
I would add.
Commissioner Maples sees. He's not done yet.
I would add one item to this list, and this might actually just be a very local item that doesn't have to do with Tallahassee and just involves Palm Beach County. But one priority that I would like to us, us to start thinking about is Blue Way access to, you know, Lake Worth Lagoon. Is that a Tallahassee issue or is that just strictly West Palm, Lake Worth?
It's going to be private funding.
Can I answer it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The legislature in the past has given $250,000 to the Blue Way Trail Initiative for the purpose of an engineering and design feasibility study, which, which was done. I think Taylor Engineering did it out of Jacksonville. So all of that is still very doable. The Water Management District has, has not said no. They would be a permitting agency, but like the mayor just said, there is a funding issue. And that seems to be the roadblock right now. So I'm not sure without a private sector component or some other funding component, why the legislature would call that a priority.
I wholeheartedly agree with everyone who's said so far that vacuuming of, of, of should be the top priority. I just wanted to.
Wouldn't necessarily, the short answer is it's not necessarily a Tallahassee answer. It is probably get some private funding.
Well, if I may interject, we have had some conversations with the marine industry of Palm Beaches. Their numbers and dollars are limited at the moment always, but it's one of those things you never want to give up. You just got to keep building your relationships, keep making your contacts. We're trying to form better relationships with the city of Lake Worth Beach. Some of the elements that were there at that time no longer exist. So the door is not closed from my perspective. And it's something that we, we're not asking for money at the moment. We're, we're just actually just seeing how the winds are blowing, what the players out there are thinking. Because there is some, there's some interest. It's just where's the money going to come from? Who's going to manage it? Who's going to take care of it? All these little different things that need to come together that, you know, over time will. It's only been a short 10 years.
Anything else? Mr. Maples, you're not going to let me go yet, are you?
No, 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 no. I'm. I, I did want to ask for the, the five-year work program. Is that something that is a legislative issue? That's something like a town manager council direction issue to get that piece done so we can get in there and make sure we've got our name in the hat for those dollars?
So the transportation planning, it used to be something else. It's now the Transportation Planning Agency of Palm Beach County. And communities sit on the TPA. I don't think we have a seat right now. We don't. But we used to have, we were, we had somebody on the technical advisory committee. I think Dan was, I think, one time. But so they are the ones that take that allocation from the road dollars and give it to, there's different types, state, local. So Palm Beach County gets an X amount of dollars to spend on roads. And some of that, it goes to commute local, local governments. So that, so that money that Palm Beach County gets for roads, it's allocated by a decision-making body made up of the cities and the counties. So you have to get on that. And, and when they, so the five-year work program, so the people going on right now are year five. So five years from now, that road project for whatever city that is, is going to get funded. And then next year you go up to your, 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 your four, your three, your two. But a lot of times projects fall out. So somebody that may be five, in year three, they figured out something else and they fall out. And that's where you want to get in to say, okay, I've got a project. So you've got to figure out if you're, you got to, you got to go to them. And basically, so the commission would say to, to your manager, this is a road project we want done. These roads need to be paved. We want to accelerate that. And here's why. There are connectivity road. There's, you know, they're, they're an important road connecting to Florida. Whatever it may be. And that's where you want to get on that five-year work program. Once that happens, the legislature never looks at it. They basically say, okay, what is all that budget from all 67 counties? That's the five-year road plan funded.
So how do we get, do we need somebody on the TPA or do we need to?
That would be.
How do, how do we get plugged in and Joe maybe?
You have a representative. Let's say it's the mayor of Green Acres. He, he's got the region. So you would speak to him or her.
Oh, Joe had it?
No, I don't know. I'm just giving you an example. It's, there's 19, I think it was 19 people, all the large cities, some county commissioners. So this, it's a large bureaucratic board.
Right.
So you, first you have to come up, what do you want? What, what are you looking for? Paving local roads, I haven't seen them do that kind of work. You know, they're looking at first state roads. And then if, if you have some local roads where you want to put, what's the, what's the buzzword now where? Smart streets. Smart streets. Thank you. The smart streets where it's about pedestrians and sharing the roads with cars. And so that's the buzzword today. So if you do a project like that, they're, they might listen, but just paving and drainage.
Well, I mean, we can definitely use a little smart street action down Pine Tree with the.
It's, that's, that's where, if you, if you're looking for an angle, that's the angle I would suggest you look into. Because they're, they're looking at safety. Florida has the worst fatality rate in the union.
Okay.
For, for pedestrians.
Thank you.
So it was not just our local roads, it had to be the smart streets.
Well.
No, I, I'm, listen, I, I'm one of those people that walk and I see people run and they walk their dogs, they walk their kids.
Yeah, yeah. There's three different buckets that come out of the TPA. And so there's three categories of road funding. Without, I'm not, let's not take the time right now. Be happy to, to chat. Joe can get it. But, but, but your manager is correct. The first thing is what do you want to do? And we'll figure out which silo that goes into. But, and they rotate the members on the TPA, if not get somebody on the technical advisory board. You know, there's ways to get your ask in, but, but you definitely have to start looking at that. Once you're on the five-year work plan, no matter where you are, then we can do something in Tallahassee.
So step one is getting there. We're not, we're, we're already a year behind on that. We can't, we missed the deadline for this year.
On the FERDAP. But at any moment that five, that five-year work plan is, is always in motion. There's always a project falling out at some point. There's always something going on. So you just need to get more engaged with the TPA.
Okay. So we're back to legislative priorities. We talked about a, a money priority and a policy. So really, I think vacuuming would be our number one. And number two would be the enclave. Policy. It's, it's two separate issues and that's, for me, that's my two priorities that I see that are doable.
Any other discussion?
And this, we would be putting these priorities in place in December, making our recommendations.
We need to get moving on it.
We can put them in priority right now. If, if you make a motion right now, since. Yeah. And I, all I've done is draft what that legislation would be. It's, it's a concept. As soon as you, a legislator drops that in, bill drafting goes, well, why did you, you know, and they reword it anyway, but it's, at least you're dropping in the concept of we want to make sure the counties, when the clock starts ticking, they do have a timeline to get, to get that done. And the money, you've got a little more time on that. Projects appropriation, budget projects won't be probably due till the end of January, I'm guessing. So you've got, wait to see what DEP does on your grant. And if they do give you something, it's going to be tough to go back and go, we want more right away. And if they don't give you anything, then we start screaming even louder, going, this is, this is absolutely the wrong thing. That somebody dumped a bunch of sewer in our lake and you're not going to help us. Twice.
And, and park funding would, 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 would be in direct competition with the vacuuming, I'm gathering.
Which funding?
No.
It's not direct competition, but.
The park funding, we're not ready for. We, we didn't even know what we would ask for right now. You got to do the master plan for it. That's why I put it on here. It's October. You got, you got 11 months to get ready. Yeah, we got time to get ready for that.
And we, we could have other financial asks. He's just saying that we have a better shot at moving forward with one that we really believe in and is a top priority.
In the water category, one in the road category, but you're not ready for the road category. One in the park category, you know, you can have different silos. One in the education, if you had an elementary school in your community, I mean, you just want to, you know, make sure you're not loading up.
Thank you, Richard.
Can we have a motion?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I'm going to go back to my original motion for, for the finance policy. I would like to see the vacuuming and for a policy, I'd like to see the enclave.
Annexation.
Annexation.
I'll second that.
Own favorite?
Hi.
Cheers.
We got, we got comments.
Oh. Oh, yeah, you can say something.
We were looking for you online.
I got kicked off a few times. There was like an update on this go meeting or whatnot. Are you guys approving both the enclave as well as, what was the other one?
Dredging.
Vacuuming. Yeah, you keep saying dredging and I'm trying not to say.
Vacuuming sounds too much like housework.
So you guys feel like it's a good motion to put forth vacuuming as well as annexation of Edgewater? It's, they're two separate asks. One's a financial ask. So that's, I would say the lead priority for myself and one is the annexation, which is more of income revenue for the actual. All right. So Taylor is for the annexation of Edgewater. All right. Is anyone else for, I missed both habits.
Five to zero.
They happen so fast. All right. So everyone up here is for the annexation of Edgewater, just so we're clear.
Yes.
Okay, that's important to know. So residents can know Edgewater came here as much as they could because they really don't belong here, like to this town. They don't get like, hey, we're having a meeting because they're, I don't know who they are, unincorporated or whomever they are. So.
They're an enclave.
They grossly oppose the annexation, like 98% of residents grossly oppose their annexation. So they do not collect any sort of funds or emergency services from us. They don't take any sort of obviously road paving projects, anything that benefits that small community. They do not use. They don't take advantage of our police department. They don't take advantage of our fire department, which we don't have because we have, you know, contracts with Palm Beach County. So just so we're clear, you guys are for annexation and for the rewriting of a Florida bill that's already been rewritten, but we're going to rewrite it to say that we're forcing Palm Beach County to accept it within 90 days of submitting it.
Well, we were following the guidance of Palm Beach County when that was.
You're following the guidance of Pinsky that was just up here.
No.
Because Palm Beach County denied your annexation last year.
Well, that's because the administrator couldn't vote, but the administrator was the one that set it forth. But all of the, and I had lunch with Commissioner Barnett and told him that he was the only one that I could really see and know vote for. It's an enclave. There are dollars that get extended out. It's not just here in Lake Clark Shores. It's throughout the state in different counties. Yeah, there's enclaves all over the place.
Yeah, there's enclaves, but you're, just to be clear for the record, you're saying there's dollars that the town of Lake Clark Shores spends toward the annexation, toward Edgewater Estates.
Depends on how you, how you.
All right. I'm saying Lake Clark Shores has money to spend and we're in the negative because we've given money to these two streets that are without our perimeter.
No, we don't, we do not fund anything directly in Edgewater.
We've all established that in previous meetings. So I'm just trying to make sure because the mayor is telling me that we do. So I just want.
But not directly.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Indirectly, but not directly. You don't. Be real. You don't.
Indirectly, directly.
We don't have a fire department. We don't have police that service them. So we don't.
Does the police patrol Edgewater?
They don't. They don't. They've said it in multiple meetings. Just because I know we have so many new members here, like I just want to be clear because there are people in Edgewater that do care. And there was a gentleman that took on the task because this is a monumental task. We all have jobs, families. We all like, you guys up here, like it's a thankless job. You get paid nothing. You're up there like basically donating.
We do get $92.
Well, you get a hundred dollars a month. It's very.
It's 92 at the end of the day.
Once your tax. So long and short is the people in Edgewater do care and they're concerned because their taxes are going to go up. It's no, it's a no brainer. Pinsky's been up here telling us you're going to get $100,000 more a year if you can annex them. So the only benefit is for this town to capture their money, their, their tax revenue. And you guys can sit up here and carry on business as usual. Meanwhile, my number one, everyone knows Jen Chenowski, 7130 Pine Tree Lane. I just want the roads paved.
And if you weren't, you weren't here before and you got kicked off, we already had said those things are in the pipeline.
I would like to get the roads paved.
And we said they're in, they're in the pipeline.
The roads paved from Forest Hill and Pine Tree down the street.
Understood. How else can we help you?
All the way over.
It's understood. How else can we help you?
I'd like everyone on this town to see that we did some patches over the last couple of weeks. Great job. Some patches are made. Everyone wonders why are patches being made? They're not all being paved, not every street. All right. They patched a five-foot area on Pine Tree Lane last week and this week they decided to put one white line on the outside of the street on Pine Tree Lane.
I think that was for Tim's request. That's in front of, or right there around Mike's house.
It's really tragic looking. It's very embarrassing because there are no lines. The, the only lines, the only lines that are there. The only lines that are there is one outside white line. There are no other lines. These roads. Yeah, the roads have not been paved since 1995.
I understand you're out of order by grabbing the microphone. You can stay over there. We see it. What else, what else would you like to talk about? It was five to zero. So we've got that. What other?
Five to zero, you guys want to annex Edgewater? Do you want to talk about your petition? I also like, I would like to beg and plead if I have to get down on my knee, I will. I would love to see. I would love to see our roads paved, all of them, without the patches. Or one five-foot white line. Because it's a little embarrassing.
Okay, we got it.
Okay. I feel like we pay substantial like taxes, like we're all keeping our yards nice, like we're being good little citizens. But maybe we could get our roads paved.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Jen, I think that's, that's, that's actually on the agenda for Joe, for Joe's comments. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. I ran over here. I had kids and sports and I couldn't.
Hang, hang around and see what Joe has to say about that. It gets on his, on his agenda.
Okay. Oh, I can't wait. All right. I'm gonna try to stick around as long as possible.
And you're gonna love, and you're gonna.
To get to bed.
You're gonna love the next item on the agenda.
I am? What is it?
Hang, hang around.
Propose septic sewers next.
Subject to zero.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your time. It's gonna be a long night. Thank you for all.
Thank you.
Are you ready, sir?
Well, we got one more. I think we got one more comment. One more.
You taking your earlier comment back now?
No, I just want to clarify that I think that what Mr. Pinsky is doing is fine and great, but we don't control the water that comes in our lake. I think our biggest concern is really the roads and our septic to sewer conversion. I think that we can all agree on that. I think if you also go to the residents, residents and say, you know, vocalize opposing cons on the septic sewer and the cost of, you know, the cost to homeowner, I think it's really nothing when you really think about that.
So are you, are you saying you are, like, where do you stand on that issue?
I'm 100% for it. I own two properties in this town on the same street. Uh, my family was, we own another two as a family, uh, as families, so total of four. I want to be able to use my yard. I want to, my master bedroom and have a nice master. I don't have to maintain a septic su- uh, septic system. I think that everybody in this town doesn't want to do that. So, I mean, I really feel bad for the people that actually just put in new septic systems over the last, God knows how many years. It's really sad when you think about it. But, um, all in all, I mean, our property values go up. Desire to live here goes up. Lake gets cleaner. I mean, Joe and I have had this conversation, but, I mean, all in all, who doesn't want to, you know, a sewer system?
950 people that signed a petition.
Well, I think if it's, I think if it's our.
Morty, let me, listen, this, don't put the cart before the horse. The septic to sewer is not going to go away, no matter what, no matter what anybody signs. I don't know how many people here I've seen in these meetings that I attend on a regular basis. I can tell you, it's not any, this isn't going to go away in the state. We have to prioritize, you have to show. If, if we don't do and follow advice, it's like your attorney, Charlie. You get advice from your attorney. A good client follows it. A client who doesn't want to be a good client doesn't. So if we go in there and we show this, if we go in and we say, once again, they don't want sewers, we're not going to do sewers, it doesn't mean it's going to go away. What is going to mean is you and your four houses that you and your family own are going to end up more than likely paying the full freight. The, the winds of all of that are blowing in a different direction in Tallahassee. So, once you say that you've made a commitment to this water quality, which some people don't want to include that sentence in, in instruction from the DEP, once you do that, you're going to get one ask. I think that somewhere along the lines, there's going to be some money coming from a cleanup somewhere. There's lawsuits. They're just sitting there contemplating, waiting. I agree with you. I, I, there's been no.
We're all just sitting ducks at the end of the day.
Well, that's right.
Happens. So why don't we just do it and, you know, rip the vending off, you know?
Well, right now we have the opportunity potentially to get money for the cleanup.
Is there a timeline on this?
Pardon me?
Timeline?
On what?
On, you know, when this money is supposed to be coming.
Well, yes, we're looking, we're waiting to see if we got the money in December, he just said, right?
We, we have a grant application, but we don't.
But.
We're at their mercy.
But.
If we don't get that.
At the end of the day, like, we're gonna do it somewhere down the line. You know, it was cheaper from what, I'm only a resident here for five years.
Right.
Right? So.
It could have been done for nine grand in 2005 or thereabouts.
That's fine. I mean, I care about it a little bit more now.
Well, sure. You want to use your land. I understand. I want to use the water. I want to let my grandchildren go water skiing. I want my kids to be able to water ski again.
So what's the cost to homeowner?
Well, that's the big, that's the $50 million question. I would say most people at the end of the day that I talk to want to know, what's this going to cost me?
Sorry, she's not.
So the late cleanup is, uh, well, the vacuuming, let's say, is the beginning steps. And then, did you watch the charrette on, what's it on YouTube?
It's on the website, YouTube.
I don't.
Okay. So you have these professionals that this is what they do and they're advising. That's all this is, is an advisory. This is coming, I don't know when. It could be for your children that are living in your in-law's house. When they want to stay in briny breezes and they say, I'm over that. I like that big water better than I like the little Lake Clark Shores. So this is, in my opinion, looking forward, seeing where we're going to be as a town wherever. You have, you have people coming up here. They, we spent too much money. You want to reduce taxes. We wanted this, we wanted that. I, listen, I told those folks, I've talked to some of them. I have friends that live in Edgewater. It, it's not, it's not against most municipalities to try to want to increase their tax base to make their, uh, their community better and have more dollars in order to do things. It's not unusual.
I just, I don't know enough about this dredging, vacuuming thing. I just feel like it's a waste of money.
So let me just to, to the point, and the reason why we put that priority there first is simply this, because of the two spills that recently happened, we have a, a greater chance of actually succeeding and getting the money to actually clean the lake. That's why it's a priority because with a freshman legislator, if we ask for some of these big ticket items, chances are, no disrespect to anyone, it's going to be tough. It's going to be an uphill battle. So we're.
She knows that.
And she understands that, right? So we're trying to ask for something that we feel like, and everyone else can kind of get behind and say, hey, they kind of deserve this. It's a bad deal. Let's clean up the lake. And the reality of it is, is that when that lake is clean, then the conversation is like, hey, how do we keep it clean?
But if the water's flowing from the, from the big lake.
Yeah.
Coming, how do we control the water coming down to us?
We don't.
We don't.
Okay, so then, so we're throwing money our.
No.
We're throwing money in the water.
Well, have you been in, have you been in the lake lately?
No.
Have you jumped in and felt the bottom?
I actually, no.
So probably never will if that thing keeps the way it is.
If you go back there behind, um, the Chinowskis area there where they live on that little canal and the in-laws live and all that kind of stuff. If you ever get in there, there's about probably up to my waist.
So is this dredging or is this vacuuming?
Vacuuming, sucking all that stuff off the bottom.
They call it dredging. It's vacuuming at the end of the day. It's a step.
I don't know. I, I heard vacuuming. I'm thinking like they're vacuuming the top of the water.
No, no, no. At the bottom on the sediment.
That's dredging.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You're dredging.
I'm in the marine business. That's dredging.
Dredging, right.
It's all for what it is.
Yeah, yeah. So we're going, we're going that route to try to, and the really, the reality of it is, we're looking to get the money from Tallahassee. There's a greater opportunity. If we come to them with this issue, we could win it. We're trying to bring some money to the town to take care of this issue.
And nobody can deny we need it.
And no one can deny we need it.
I, I don't mind that. I just, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, especially since you're going to be living on the water. All right, we're moving on. Thank you, Morty.
Really quick. Thank you very much.
Moving on. First, we're going to move on to the next item.
Really quick, really quick. Because Morty has so many great points. Can I just speak really quick? Is this on? Seriously, I have no clue. All right. Morty, so many great points. I feel like when the state wants us to do it, they're going to give us money, right?
I disagree.
I, I feel highly.
That's why they won't, that's why they won't mandate septic sewer.
Okay, for the septic sewer, you're saying, you feel like the state's going to give you the money?
Well, I've seen projects in Citrus County where they've done, they've actually done septic remediation programs through state funding, many millions of dollars, maybe upwards of the billions, where they're like replacing septic, knowing that they're not like putting in sewer infrastructure. So I think when we are like, let's say, when you guys wanted to do all of these plans and have everything shovel ready to get this grant money, I think that's a great move in trying to capture this money when they feel, oh, this is an important, like, um, this is an important solution to help this lake, right? Right now, I think where we're at, we haven't let the DEP like, um, study the lake. We haven't let the DEP come out and say, here's the baseline, here's where we see it going, like these are the issues, we're like recognizing stormwater is the issue or whatever. And this is how we can remediate it. They gave you a plan and then they sit there, I've talked to the DEP, they say, all right, if 100% of your pollution is an issue, these people dump stormwater into your lake that, or if it's Lake, if it's Lake Worth Drainage or if it's, um, South Florida Water Management, they actually like, not on a very, it's not tit for tat, but they sit there and they say, all right, these people also contribute to your stormwater. This is the issue. And then they, they assign, um, they assign like the fiscal responsibility to all these other shareholders in the waters and the, what do they call that? The water.
Shed.
Shed, the watershed, all these stakeholders. So you're talking about Palm Beach County, Lake Worth Drainage District, South Florida Water Management. And there's one other that's like fleeting me right now. But my point is, it would be like.
Could be the feds because I-95 drains right into it as well.
It could be. I mean, I don't know. I can't remember right now and I'm doing it off the top of my head. But my point is that when you get the collaborative, like DEP on your side, they do this study, they look at the water, lake, the water quality of the lake, and they say, well, we see this coming in, this coming in, they all affect the lake. And it's not just this little town of Lake Clark.
So are you opposed to, uh, dredging the lake and getting free money to do that?
It's not dredging, it's vacuuming. No.
Are you opposed to dred? Okay, well, that's, that's the subject at hand. We're not talking septic to sewer and we're not even looking for those dollars.
Kind of goes back to that because I just want.
We're looking, we're looking for vacuuming, dredging. Your roads will get paved.
If they don't get paved, you guys tell me it's because of septic sewer.
That's, no, that's.
I don't, yeah, I think we're, I, I know the next agenda item is septic to sewer related, but right now I think we just had a five, zero vote.
We need to move forward. You have children who will need you at home.
What our legislative priority. Our legislative priority is not septic to sewer this cycle.
Rescue us.
Right now, we're going right here to this.
Okay, at the September meeting, you asked us, me and, and administrative staff to address the issue of, uh, the possible options for voting on septic to sewer. And, uh, your manager put together a memo. I'm going to let him briefly address the memo and then I will fill in on some of the issues.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'll let Charlie talk about, can you actually, can this legislation bind a future council? Let, let him answer that. But the, the four options that we came up with are, first is to keep with the status quo. The status quo, and Jennifer, you wouldn't want to hear this one, is, um, is keep looking for free money for septic to sewer and dredging and vacuuming projects, but start the discussion because of the uncertainty of time of paving a roads like Pine Tree. And we're going to start discussing that next summer.
You hear that?
Okay.
Yeah. All the mics sound quiet to me right now.
Well, it says it's on.
Mine says it's on too.
Yeah, but I, I agree. It's usually, it's slower than it's usual. I'll talk a little louder.
Oh, oh, it's noticeable.
Gremlin up here.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk a little louder, but that's, that's option one. Uh, option two is to, you said to look at a ballot question. So we can do a straw ballot question. Again, it's non-binding and it's not just the homeowners, the property owners. When you do a ballot question, the renters can vote, uh, dependents can vote, my, you know, my 18-year-old daughter can vote. So anyone who's can vote, can vote on that. So it's not just the property owner. So that's one of the negatives. And the also, the other negatives, it's very expensive. It's, it's going to cost, we don't even know anymore because the, the prices keep going up, but I'm, I'm sure it's going to be in the tens of thousands. The, the, or we can use the process that we did in 2005 was, which we, we get one vote per property owner of the 702 homeowners that would be affected. Um, at your discretion, we would go out and ask for proper ID. So maybe the husband and the wife don't agree on it. So we, we don't, we don't know how we would do this, but, um, this is what was done in, in 2005. The, the fourth option is to hire consultant. Again, very expensive. All these options are pretty expensive, but this one's very expensive to hire a professional, uh, surveying company to survey the community to see what they feel about septic to sewer conversion. So those are the four options that we came up with and Charlie wants to talk about the legal.
Ultimately, this decision is a legislative decision and the law in Florida is very clear on binding future town councils and, and even the current town councils. If you do this vote, it is not a binding vote. You ultimately always have the ability as the elected representatives of the citizens of Lake Clark Shores to determine how and when you are going to proceed. So as you look at these options, you need to realize that this is, for lack of a better term, a straw ballot, a non-binding ballot. When you look at the issues related to each of the options, I think the least favorable option is to put this on a ballot where you actually vote at a general or special election through the supervisor of election because of the cost and because of the, uh, limitations on who can and cannot vote. You could very easily have property owners who are affected by the decision who can't vote because they're not registered voters here. You can also have people who are registered voters who don't own property and are not going to be affected by the vote or own property in the town that is not affected by the conversion. So as we look at this, I think you have clearly said in the past, we are not going to jump into a conversion until we have funding because of the cost. Uh, I think we already know the sentiment of the public. But if you want to test the, the temperature again and see where the residents are, I think option number three, doing what we did in 2005 is the better option. But I don't think you should give up the search for funding because you don't know when that funding may come available to you.
Charlie, my feeling is, and I attend these meetings on a regular basis, this is strictly my opinion and my feeling is that the state probably will not mandate. What they'll do is the health department will stop issuing permits to put in drain fields. That's what I think. And when that happens, if you haven't been chasing funding, the residents, like you said, in the future, I, an issue like this could cause people to move. And I know people that didn't realize they were buying a house with a septic tank and a drain field and turn around and sold it and left because of it. And then there's probably going to be those people, oh my gosh, if it's going to cost me $50,000, I'm going to move before that expense hits me. So it, it's, it's a double-edged sword. I've made no secret about it. We should always continue to find free dollars, always. And my feeling is from all these different meetings, and I am on the Utilities and Natural Resources Committee, is that it will happen someday. We, we should be for the future councils and for the future residents, we should be prepared for that. It, it's just good business to have a, a business plan. And that's what this is. Because this is going to end up costing someone somewhere if we say, no, we're not interested in it. I, I hope it doesn't end up costing the money for the, for the vacuuming or dredging or whatever you want to call it. Because that's in dire need. As, you know, I don't know that that's ever occurred here.
I, I, not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge either. And I've been running around on these waters since I was.
Yeah, yes, around. It's.
You know, eight years old, seven years old. So.
And I think the biggest issue of whether people in town are for or against the septic to sewer conversion is not on the issue of the conversion, but on the cost of.
Exactly.
What's it going to cost?
And if they can get it at a reasonable cost, it's, I think it's pretty clear that the majority would support it. If they can't get it at a reasonable cost, I think there are a significant number who would be opposed because they don't want to pay that exorbitant cost.
I'm looking at retiring. I don't want to pay an exorbitant cost.
All right, Charlie.
$9,000 before, but that being said, with that sort of thought process, that's where we, we, it just always becomes full circle.
Yeah, yes, it does.
And that's, that's the huge issue.
And this has been an issue that we have been looking at for easily 20 years.
And Tim made a point one day about the, uh, funding that they received in Broward.
Yes.
Joe looked it up. Those were ARFA dollars. I don't know that Palm Beach County has any more ARFA dollars. So, you know, it's just, just think, Mort, if you own two houses and you're getting no funding and you got to pay full freight.
Yeah, over the course of how long and is it free?
It's an unknown. It's an unknown. That's an unknown.
Well, we just voted, right, on our priority, our legislative priority.
I know. That's why you what there's really, we we don't know what to vote on yet. What do we vote on? You want it or you don't want it? Okay, I get that. But do you want it at this cost? Do you want it at that cost? Do you want it at you pay full price? Well, no, I understand. You walked up to the podium and I I I respect Jennifer's point of view, too. I respect everybody's point of view. But as a fiduciary person that has responsibility to the town of Lake Clark Shores, I go out there and talk to a lot of people as well. And I hear a lot of people that want it just like you. And and I'm sure there's a lot more out there that want it. And there's possibly a lot more than the nine fifty that don't want it.
Mayor.
But what do we vote on?
Did we all just agree that our legislative priority for this session is going to be seeking funding for the cleanup?
Yes.
So isn't this, I mean, I I know we can have this conversation.
This is the more of the vote.
Well, he was this, he was describing the legal ramifications of each option, not that we have. He was describing the legal ramifications of of each one, because we asked him to describe that.
Yeah.
But we, I I feel like we've also been told that if we choose to do something like this right now, which wouldn't be binding when there isn't any money on the table. I mean, I'm not gonna ask any of our residents to pay for something outright. And that's not our priority for this season. Our priority is to go to the legislator and ask for them to fund this cleanup, because this is an emergency situation. In my mind, it might not be an emergency for everybody else, but that is the priority.
I agree with you.
And we all voted on that, right, just now?
I think the emergency is the safety of being able to walk out.
And I and I want to address that, too, when we get to our comments. But right now, we have an agenda and we try and go agenda item by agenda item. But I do very much appreciate what we're all saying.
I I I'm not gonna stick around too long, but I I appreciate everybody and I I love the panel. It's fantastic. I just want everybody to understand where the residents come from. While we don't want to pay out of pocket all that much money, we do want to be able to walk down our street without.
We're working on it. So can I can I add to, and we're talking about the issue of the proposed septic sewer project and voting options. There was a petition that was done and put forth and residents signed that and there was work put into that. And I believe in some respects, it was really saying, hey, whether you agree with septic sewer or not, let's have a voice and let the residents decide on that. So I'm proposing option number three per the Mr. Scheck here, our town attorney, with the exception of two things. Number one, use the processes the town did in two thousand and five. The town was soliciting input and questions from all property owners. But in addition to that, we pave Pine Tree and other roads due to the unknown timeframe to get the funding for septic to sewer project. So we're doing that and that. And then number three, we continue to look for funding for the conversion as we've done in the past. So doing number three, but a combination of paving Pine Tree and other roads with the unknown timeframe, getting responses from the residents as we've done in two thousand and five, while still looking for money that we're not sure when or how much we're going to get for this project. At this point, we do have a pretty good idea of how much it costs, since this is not a binding vote. It really doesn't matter how accurate it is, but it does give us a pulse on whether or not the people want this. And then once we get a majority direction, we can then go to Mr. Penske and say, hey, here's what we're going to do with a little bit more clarity, and the people have had a chance to voice their opinion and have a voice.
John, do you think being able to maneuver Pine Tree Lane without spilling your coffee multiple times by going three doors down is more important than your, the late dredging?
I didn't hear that.
I heard him. He basically, he basically said, hey, man, the roads need to be paved, and I spilled my coffee just walking down the street or driving to.
But I don't want to waste money at the same time. I just want.
Yeah, no.
Compromise.
And here's the deal. Do you think we can do both of them at the same time? I believe we can do both. We can work with the legislators to get the money for the lake and also pave Pine Tree and also get the vote. We can do these.
We need to prioritize. That's all I'm saying.
So we could do these things and I.
I don't think the lake is a priority. I think the roads and the septic sewer is a priority. I think if we.
If you were listening to Mr. Penske, he says you're have a more favorable likelihood of receiving funds for the lake. You probably will not receive any funds from the state for local paving. So if you, if you take out the lake and go just for the roads, you're likely to come back with a big zero.
Charlie, can you agree that we're gonna be forced to do this septic to sewer anytime soon?
I I have no idea.
I actually would like to invite a dear friend of mine who I work out with every day. He's a high level D E P. Whatever you want to call it, official. And he says that we're gonna be forced to to do this septic sewer, whether we like it or not. The infrastructure is right on the other side of Florida mango, and it's only a matter of time. So.
Just said that before. I've been saying that for years.
A hundred percent. Hundred percent, so.
It's a matter of time. We just don't know what that timeframe is.
We're all saying the same thing, I think, in different.
But what I'm saying, though, is that we don't want to wait to pay Pine Tree for whatever that matter of time is because it's unknown. So again, I go back to option three. We're gonna give the straw vote, my recommendation, pave the road, Pine Tree, because we don't know how much or when, and then ultimately continue to look for the funds for the, I don't know when to happen, but have the money ready to make this septic sewer conversion happen with the funds that we receive. But in the interim, making sure we address some of the coffee spillage and make sure that's taken care of, right? And get that taken care of. So that's what my proposal is for option three.
I I'd like to speak about the the straw vote. And in my comments are pretty similar to what I said last month. Only the houses that will be financially affected should vote, you know, the seven hundred and two, because those are the ones that have will have skin in the game. And I think that, and I and I very firmly believe that the residents should get a chance to vote. I think that we've got to figure out some way to figure out the elasticity of the numbers. So, you know, I I just to give an extreme example, at fifty thousand, you know, I vote no, but at five thousand, spread over the course of thirty years, I vote yes. So we need to figure out what people's pain point is in terms of dollars.
That would be option four.
What?
That would, that would be, that would be option four.
No.
A professional to.
No, no, that doesn't, no, that that was, we give, when on the on the ballot that each house gets gets to vote on, it has several different choices.
But we don't know that, we don't have numbers. That's one of the problems. We don't have numbers.
So the. Well, we we've done, I mean, we've done research. We have, we have. We don't know what the grant's gonna be, but we know what the, we have a good idea what the cost would be.
I don't know. It depends on when it comes down the road.
I think if it's just a black or white vote, you're gonna get a different answer than if you give people.
I agree with you. I agree.
I do have some current concerns about what our lobbyists brought up regarding if there is an indication that we're not committed to, you know, remediation or septic to sewer, that we might not get access to the additional funding. Right now, while there's no money on table on the table for septic to sewer, is it necessary to take a vote? And then maybe that's a no signal to them. I feel like when there's money on the table, if and when that happens, then give the people the vote to choose if they want to do it, having all of the information.
So the question, though, begs to, what about paving the roads?
I I agree with you one hundred percent, one hundred.
Conversation has been in the past, we're not paving the roads. And I get it. It it like, we're not gonna pave the roads, do the septic to sewer, and then pave the roads again. That just doesn't make sense. The challenge here is that that's been said for thirty years. So the reality is, we, you know, if it's free, septic sewer, everybody wants it. But at the end of the day, that is not likely. So we have to get the money through grants and other vehicles for funding. But ultimately, paving the roads, I think, gives us a little breathing room to really focus on getting that money and getting that deal done and getting the consensus from the people to do that. But paving the roads kind of like, all right, guys, they're like, okay, we've done our job there. So now we can focus on this other deal.
Vice Mayor Maples.
Paving the roads kicking the can?
Can. Vice Mayor Maples, may I?
Septic to sewer, that's exactly what's been going on.
We can't have a conversation up here in the sunshine.
Well, I I get that, but ultimately, there's a lot of people in this town who cannot afford to do septic to sewer and rip the bandaid off. And ultimately, while that would be the easy solution, hey, we're gonna rip the bandaid off, everyone pays for their own deal. We got, you've got a year, thirty years to pay for whatever it is, we're just moving forward and doing it. That would isolate a large majority of the town who may say, hey, I can't afford to do that, or a small majority of town. We don't know. That's why that straw poll is important.
Vice Mayor Maples, can I can I respond to your statement? Because I agree one hundred percent. And I think I was gonna wait to bring this up so that we could stick to an agenda, but since we're having this open conversation, as we should be in the sunshine. I did request a list of all of the the roads and projects that have been paved by each fiscal year, going back four cycles, which I have here, which I know can be shared. And as of right now, which we've discussed multiple times, there isn't a formal way that we select these roads to be paved. And yes, some of the projects have been on hold because of the conversation around septic to sewer, which we know right now this year is not going to be a priority for us. So I was hoping to ask my fellow counsel and Mayor Freebold to put this on our next session's agenda to discuss this plan and procedure. Joe, if you would like to describe what you described to me on the phone earlier about how projects, road paving projects in our community are selected currently?
Basically, we look at the past practices, I believe, looking at the worst roads and just paving them. So to me, that's not really a policy. A policy that I've seen in other communities is where you have someone who's very knowledgeable about road maintenance, the substructure of the road, the actual asphalt on the road. And they rate them how bad they are, the conditions are, and then they rate which ones you should do first. So that's a policy, in my opinion. So.
So we could actually have this as a future agenda item, like our next agenda, to make sure that we set a policy in place.
We could.
Not waiting on septic to sewer, because that's not on the table right now, and making sure that some of these very high priority, dangerous roads, as they stand, are next in line.
Right.
How how much would it be cost to pave the entire length of Pine Tree?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I don't know. I I think we've budgeted over the course of several years.
We should have it as an agenda item to go through all of these details.
Didn't we budget for?
We're having discussion. I'll get to you in a minute. I know you want to talk.
Didn't we, didn't we put some money in the budget for paving?
Yeah, a hundred thousand. Yes, and you and you can, again, we we were gonna wait to June, but you can you can do pieces of it. You can do the whole thing. It it's up to you. We're gonna have that discussion in June. That's what you all said. We're not gonna wait for the septic to sewer to happen. That's why I put it right in the memo. And because of the unknown timeframe, and you guys are gonna discuss paving Pine Tree and other roads. The 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 issue was in the past, they would hold off on those roads because
Right.
they knew there was a possibility of them getting ripped up again. But we're not, we're throwing, you guys had that decision already. You threw that out. We're gonna discuss it in our next budget cycle.
Now, could it be done in segments?
Yes.
And how could we get that estimate? Like, we're gonna do Pine Tree, we're gonna do this quarter, we're gonna do Pine Tree, we're.
Staff is.
South, West Lake, the north side.
As usual, you read my mind. We, I've had this discussion with staff to get some options already to start work. So I'm prepared in June to have the conversation.
I think it's putting the cart before the horse to say, let's go approve paving without knowing what the cost is. Also, I'm for a vote, but there's so many unknowns about how much it costs, regardless of which issue we go forward with. We're gonna put out tens of, tens to ten to thirty thousand dollars to have a straw poll to tell us. I beg to, I beg to differ. I have asked that same same, it depends on which option. And when you go to the elections, it's even higher. When you go to the option of having them go house to house, you have to use staff, which you have to count for their salaries or overtime and everything else.
We can't even do it anymore because of that.
Bye, Morty. Jennifer, please respect her time to talk. Okay.
Just so you know.
Cost to everything. And you can, you can say that it's volunteer. There's no volunteer. These people, this is their employment. They have to go out and do it. So respect the staff. They 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 run this, they run this town.
I think the cost is seven hundred and two times a first class stamp.
Just just so you know, I have to point out all the facts. On option three, which is the one we did in two thousand and five, there was a different law at that time that you can actually, the the town staff can be biased or talk about the issues. If you do something like this, I would have to get an opinion from Charlie. But we can only talk about the process. So if somebody came to me and said, what about this and what about that? I would say, go look at this, you know, the workshop on the website. But I can't talk about any of the pros and cons of what they're, they can talk to you, but they can't talk to staff.
We can educate, we can't promote.
The things have changed since they did the.
You can't, you can't even educate through the voice. It has to be on the website. So you can't, it's, it has to be on the website, just like we have. We have a charrette workshop on the website. So I I would point them to the website. I can't answer, once you have a a question out there, I can't advocate a position.
Correct.
So so I I could not, like Morty just said, he called me, asked me questions. Of course, I talked to him twenty minutes and I answered his questions. That will, if you do option three, I will not be able to do that.
So.
You guys can do it.
That's prior to the vote. And then after the vote, you can ask your questions. Is that correct?
Yes. Well, while there's a question outstanding or a ballot, I cannot, me and my staff, I would educate my staff. It's a, can't talk about anything. You can only talk about the process. You can talk about, if you directed us to have one vote per property owner, stuff like that, that's the process. But if they talk about, what does that mean? What is the money? How do you, how do you pay off our assessment? How how is the hookup fees? I can't answer any of those questions that I can answer today. So I'm just letting you know, there's a lot of issues with all these options. So that's, so that, just want to let you know.
And when you said they go out house to house, only one person in that resident could vote.
No, you have to direct us. You would, you would direct us. I I just made that a suggestion.
There's many variables.
Right.
Correct. You could have.
You can have multiple votes. You could, typically, it would be two, but my wife would counter me and vote against me. Now, I'm just kidding.
There's so many variables in that process. I like that we we talked about moving forward with the roads. I think that's, we need to get a cost of a plan.
I'm working on that.
Bring it and bring it back to the next meeting and.
Not not the next meeting. You said June, but but.
We're already into this budget.
Yes, yes.
Come up with a plan and whenever the plan is, you know.
Right.
We can still address the policy aspect of it, though.
Yes.
In the next agenda.
You you could. And we could talk about it now. I mean, again, it's getting a professional.
Till midnight, so.
Whatever.
I think everyone should be prepared, have the list of roads that I have and.
We can do that.
Okay.
How much did we just pay for the traffic study?
Eighteen thousand five hundred, my memories. And that's, and that's who you, and I remember that that professional did say the roads are, I'm not gonna say this out loud and get screamed at, but he said there's no urgent need. So, you know, consultant, that's not what he does. He's a traffic engineer. So you would, you would usually get somebody who knows road construction. And like I said, you don't look at the top of a road. You actually, sometimes you take bore readings of the structure, substructure. You look at ripples in the road. Sometimes ripples means there's substance. I I only know enough to be dangerous. So.
Would we be spending, we're gonna be spending money with Mr. Cohen to develop our branding and tagline, correct?
Well, you haven't voted on that yet, but I'm gonna come back.
Potentially. So maybe this is a priority. If that's what, you know, the residents are asking and maybe something for us to take into consideration.
And and after we, I do this thing where I'm gonna do in June, there might not even be a need. I don't, I don't know how many roads there are left that are needed. Remember, some of the roads are county roads and some, you know, we've paved some, you saw the list. We've done some work in the last four years. We've paved roads. So I I don't know what I'll come up with in June. I haven't started.
Well, I think if we have it on the next agenda, does everyone agree we should have it on the next agenda? Then at least we can discuss the policy aspect of it.
I'm good with that.
And then you're gonna look to the future to come up with a comprehensive plan of how it would be implemented.
We're we're working on that, right.
I just like to have my ducks in a row. I feel like it.
Me, too, because I knew that would come, I can, Bridget, we think the same. And I was thinking, I gotta know how much this, the whole roadway costs and and it's gotta be hundreds of thousands of dollars. But you you don't have to do it all in one year. You can do it over several years.
Okay, we're gonna move on to new business.
I don't think we finished up on the straw poll. But did we come to a consensus on on the straw poll?
I don't believe so.
No. No. Not that you have to, you just have to discuss it.
We can put it back on there, there, I think that we need to know some information. We need to know some things before, I know you're not bound to that vote, but when we are in the atmosphere that we're in, if that's the tone, you're gonna be held to that.
Can we ask our lobbyist to come back and speak to that, what, at the next meeting, what that would look like if we have a no vote on the record? How he would maneuver that, and how he thinks that would affect the potential for us to get funding? Since we still have time to set legislative priorities as of the next meeting.
I might be able to answer it, I, I've heard from him and others. They, they look at water quality, DEP, the same way, dredging, vacuuming versus septic to sewer. So they, they said, a lot of them that I've talked to said, if you're not gonna do septic to sewer, we're not gonna fund the vacuuming, because the, the lake will just get polluted in another twenty years, so they, they look at these things as a, a policy to, to clean your lake. So that's what I've heard from the professionals.
So, in this particular case, though, I think we have a, an extreme exception, because even if we were all, right now, every person in Lake Clark Shores was on sewer, the spill was a sewer spill into the lake twice. So it doesn't really, this, septic to sewer being married to the vacuuming dredging is not a thing in our particular case, I feel like, simply because of the leakage that happened twice in our lake, it prioritized us to get this money beyond just having a conversation with the two of Mary, where that might very well be, but I think we have an exception to that, and I also feel like because this is a straw vote, while it may be on the record, this is still something that's not binding. So I think that we still have the opportunity to, as a council, still get the other money that we're looking for for septic to sewer, while still getting a pulse from the people in this town of the direction we're going in. You know, I'm always gonna be of hearing a voice from the people on this thing, and, and I, and, you know, well, listening, I will argue that case, that is part of why I'm here, I believe. And so I think hearing that voice is going to be important, even if, again, having a freshman legislator, it's not like, even if we were like, alright, guys, we're going all in for this, it's still not likely that we'll get any money. It's just the reality of it, so, you know, wanna move forward with
I, I hear you, and I agree with a lot of what you're saying, I just would feel better if it's coming from the person that's gonna be lobbying that up in Tallahassee, who like actually is gonna be making those asks and get their impression of what a commitment or a non-commitment means, and not just base it on, so I don't know if we can
The grant question is not up to a freshman legislature.
The grant question is up to DEP.
Correct.
The, the
So You're talking about for the dredging or something to shore?
No, we're talking about the grant dollars for the dredging, yeah, that is not a legislative issue.
Right.
That is a request done on behalf of Lake Clark Shores.
Yeah.
Now, where they can work for us in other areas is an unknown, and you know, as well as I do, in the atmosphere in Tallahassee, it's gonna be very difficult for a Democratic freshman House of Representatives to get, possibly even on any committee.
To get a sponsor.
Or, or get any type of, you know,
Yeah.
People to listen to, or, you know.
But I wouldn't wanna hurt our chances anymore, I'm just very cautious about it, because I'm very serious about the possibility of us getting money to clean this, this lake system up.
So that is a grant issue.
Yeah.
But let's just say we don't get those grant dollars, and then we say no to that, and then we wanna go and
Oh, it's too separate, yeah.
To appropriations.
Yeah, you're, that's, you're taking yourself a hole, that you're gonna
On a whole separate issue, but yeah, on, on both of them.
And that's because, Charlie, can you help us? With this whole situation that transpired between Palm Springs, which is what's going on in Florida Mango right now, is part of that, and then Lake Worth Beach, there are lawsuits, correct?
Correct.
Where would that leave us in terms of if we had nothing in it, but it affects us, we would have to sue?
I just, I haven't looked at that litigation, so I don't know what they're actually asking for. It could ultimately benefit the town without us even being in that lawsuit, but if it doesn't, you'd have to be part of the lawsuit to raise the, your own issues.
To find dollars to clean up somebody else's mess, it's not all from that. This has been building over years and years and years and years, so it's just food for thought. But it, it, I'm with Joe, we've heard those conversations, I've been to the top brass in Tallahassee in the DEP, and it's just, it's only a matter of when, just a matter of when, and it's an unknown, so.
And whether or not to go forward with a vote, I'd like to have more facts about each option, you know, if we're gonna do option four with, if it's gonna cost you ten thousand, or it's gonna cost you the full gamut, whether we're gonna do it that way, and what is each of those options cost us, or gonna cost the residents?
Can we bring this back and get some of this information that they want before we, and this is a very important decision here, we'll be rushed into very late.
We'll try to, we'll
Love the discussion, though.
Well, this, we're in the sunshine.
I love it.
Where were you on the thirty-first?
The supervisor election was a little busy the last week, so we didn't really wanna bother them, but we can bother them now.
Alright, so is that, is everybody okay with bringing us back more information?
Absolutely.
And we'll get from there? Okay, very good.
Alright.
We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Alright, we're gonna move on to new business, we're gonna have first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one, prohibiting any unreasonably loud, excessive, unnecessary, or unusual noise from the operation of vessels within the town, Mary?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending sections thirty dash forty, thirty-four dash forty definitions, thirty-four dash forty-three noises unnecessary and excessive prohibited, thirty dash forty-five maximum permissible sound levels, and thirty dash thirty-seven exemptions of Article Three Noise of Chapter Thirty-four, nuisances and noise, imposing general noise pollution and exhaust regulations on vessels pursuant to Section three two seven point six zero two Florida statutes to prohibit any unreasonably loud, excessive, unnecessary, or unusual noise from the operation of vessels within the town, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Okay, Joe?
Obviously, we've talked about this in the past, we have an issue with jet skis, not just joyriding, but standing in somebody's backyard and just doing very noisy tricks and flips for hours, and it's, it's definitely disturbing the quality and peace of, quality of life, peaceful quality of life for that, those neighborhoods that are affected by this. So this ordinance was an opt-in to the Florida statutes that would put in teeth, so we can write violations for those unmuffled, loud vessels.
As you know, it's not just the recreational jet skiers, this is, these are souped up, and they're non-muff, non, non-muffled, and that's what makes that excessive noise, so they're technically illegal, and they, and they just come and, they, they'll, they'll do tricks for hours.
Right, if you just drive by in a joyride, that's not what we're looking at.
Does the ordinance specify a certain decibel level?
Yes, and so is the statute.
Yes.
And does, does a standard jet ski have a muffler?
Yes.
And the trick jet skis do not have mufflers?
We think, we assume so, we can't say that as this broad statement, but they're very, very loud.
Oh, I know, I live near them.
According to one of the complainants, he verified that those are unmuff, he actually talked to a jet ski expert, and he said that the way they're, the noise is not muffled, it's just exhaust, it's like if you took your muffler off your car, and that's why it's excessively loud. I have impact doors, so it's significantly impacted, I went to my neighbors, and when it's there, it's like you're standing outside. It's, it takes away from your quality of luck, so it, it is a qualitative issue.
Would the decibel restriction be triggered by a standard jet ski going up and down the lake?
We don't think so, because again, you'd have to stand there with a meter and, and count, you know, and counter the action. And, and it's not about muffler versus non-muffler, even though that's the noise, it's about the decibel level, so.
And the, the level is
I don't wanna make, I don't wanna make in an ordinance that, that, with an unintended consequence of, of prohibiting all jet skis from going up and down the lake.
The, the decibel level is set by the state statute, and it's on page two of your ordinance, thirty-four forty-five B, no person shall operate or give permission for the operation of any vessel on the waters within the town in such a manner as to exceed a maximum sound level of ninety dBa at a distance of fifty feet from the vessel, and that is directly out of the statute.
And do we know what the dBas are for a regular jet ski?
I do not know.
I could tell you that I, if a jet ski goes by, I'll hear it, and one of those coming up there does this, I can hear it through my, through my door, so I, it's significantly higher, it's not just, you know, when you, jet ski goes by, it's zoom, and this was out there, it's excessive, and it's not just going by.
No, I know, I think, I think
Stationary.
I know, it's the difference of stationary versus zoom, but I, I'm not sure the difference, Chief, I know you've gone, your, your, your guys have gone out there with the Officer Manik, I sort of, what, can you talk to the decibel levels, force, of what you measured?
He's actually one that took the reading.
Unfortunately, you don't have a choice, you have to follow the statute. If you change this to anything else, you're gonna be in violation of the statute, and it'll be unenforceable. You, you, we have taken the statute verbatim, and the statute specifically says that a local government can adopt regulation, provided it has this in it, and we have copied it verbatim right out of the statute.
I, I agree that those tricksters are
And if you look at our other sound levels, it's seventy-five to eighty, or eighty to eighty-five, so this exceeds all of our other decibel levels for any other sound in the town.
I agree that they're troublesome, I just don't, didn't want to, 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 to vote on an ordinance that had the unintended consequence of shutting down all wave runners and, and jet skis.
That's not the intention.
I know it's not the intention.
Right.
But it, you know, it's a possibility.
Okay, do we have any audience comments regarding this?
I think, in order to answer your question, my recommendation would be that we approve this on first reading, it has to come back for second reading, and we'll have your answer on what the decibel level is for a properly muffled jet ski at that next meeting.
Thank you, Charlie, good idea.
So I'd like to
Mr. Mayor, there's a comment online.
Okay, what do we got?
The comment is from Mike Bretaweg, he says, you can't even enforce them in no wake zones, but now it's a noise issue, we don't even have an officer in the boat now.
We're working on it, right, Chief?
Yes.
We're looking at putting three more officers and train certified on the ream patrol.
Sure, it's not like you can just put any officer on a boat and turn them loose, they have to have training.
Some of the readings we can do from shore where the complaint is, and we can do a little investigation and find out where they're going, they're only got so many ramps they can go to.
Right.
But I wanted to thank Charlie and the manager for working on this with us.
Good.
We'll have the second reading, and then we go forward. Right now, we're gonna give warnings, and then progressively, then we go into the citations and do
Okay, is there anybody else?
No.
No, that's it? Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to consider move, to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two zero two four dash zero one.
On favor?
Aye.
Carrie's?
I need to borrow somebody's jet ski.
Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to new business, item B, approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, authorizing the adjustment of all rates for water and sewer service for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five by two point nine percent. Joe, you wanna give a little insight?
Sure.
In your packet, but he'll shed some light on it.
As, as you know, I, I told you my history of being on the Seacoast board, which is, has fifty thousand customers for twenty years, and we always had a cost of living increase every year discussion, and my recollection is ninety-five percent of the time it passed. We haven't raised rates on our utilities, and I, this was one of our goals, is to talk about in over ten years on water and seventeen years on sewer. We have a rate study that was done back in two thousand and twenty, which is not a long time ago, and if we followed that rate study, we would have increased our water rates by twenty-one percent and twenty-three percent on the sewer side. So we talked about maybe putting a five percent increase every year, and after some research with staff and Charlie, we found we actually have this in the ordinance right now, that we can do a cost of living increase every year. It just has to be approved by resolution, correct?
Correct.
That was one of the questions, Charlie.
Correct.
So we, we're recommending that we start this process, and we'll see where it goes, but we, we, to be fiscally viable, we, we definitely have to have increases to cause, pay for operating costs increase, and and the capital, you wouldn't believe what capital costs today of any projects that have doubled since COVID, so we're still getting a lot of grants, we're doing well with them, but we definitely need to have some increases in our utility rates, and this is a good start.
Because you're dipping into reserves right now to make up the, right?
Yes, we're, or, or more importantly, we're not setting enough money aside to pay for projects, pay for water, water main lines that need to be replaced. So you have to have a newer, a replacement fund to pay for those things, and we don't, we don't have a substantial balance in those funds.
And why not make it a continuing, as opposed to one?
That, that's why I asked that, great question, that's a great question, and I asked that to Charlie, he wants us to do a resolution every year.
Yes.
But I would, I would do it the other way, and just, but it, but at Seacoast, we did vote on it every year, just like Charlie's saying. But it was a resolution too, so.
So do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six?
So moves, I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six to increase all rates of water and sewer service for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five by two point nine percent.
Second, we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to status reports, Chief, you're front and center.
You, all of you have my status report, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. I did yearly thing, the LPR system, to show you how important the LPR system is, so you can look at those stats.
Do we have any questions, Council for the Chief? Thank you, Chief, thanks, Chief. Charlie?
My agreement is included in your agenda packet, my status report is included in your agenda packet, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have regarding it.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Schiff, for his report?
All right. Upcoming dates, the next two months, December and January are normal, second Tuesday, the tenth and the fourteenth, and we're gonna have next week, which is our senior club meeting, that's the third Wednesday, that'll be November twentieth. We have the Christmas tree lighting event and the manure lighting event here at Town Hall Park, that'll be on the seventh and the twenty-ninth. So come out, and we're, we're having some great activities for both. We're gonna have a decorating contest as we normally do, I'm gonna save the, the pine tree for last, this way we can talk more about that, because there'll probably be back and forth on that. So on the paving, they're mainly all done except for some striping issues, that's, hopefully that's what Jennifer was talking about.
Jen's patch got striped.
Yeah, yeah, that's the issue, and reflectors at the, have you been out to the boat ramp, guys?
Yeah.
Of course.
It's, looks great. It really does, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a ribbon cutting event soon as we're done with it, so we'll all go out there. On the other items
Are you gonna invite any of the jet skis?
I was just gonna say.
If they have a muffler.
Are we gonna invite the jet skiers?
The jet skiers.
I know where they live.
Couple of foot, couple of celebration maneuvers for us. Anyway, sorry, go ahead, Joe. Sorry about that.
We've got to do that before the second reading. We finished our sewer main project. Uh, this is one we did pay for, but it came in under budget and uh, two hundred forty-three thousand. That's what you approved. Just want to tell you, one of the liens from code enforcement that was paid at that twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, great news on the community light project. Remember that project where we went out to bid, sealed bids? We got these two bids at a hundred and thirty and ninety-five, ninety-four thousand dollars. And I said, they're too high. Let me get some other pricing. And, and you guys gave me a limit of eighty thousand. I was able to sign a contract for under eighty thousand dollars. And they're starting that project as, so hopefully there's about five weeks of lead time to get the, the equipment in.
Nice, Joe.
Yeah, just under, right?
Just under.
That a baby.
Just under, but I got it. So.
Got it, son, baby.
Um, so also savings is that when we go out for an RFP, just so you know, it, it, you got, sometimes you have prices in there, but that doesn't mean you, you can stop there. You can actually still negotiate. Some, some people don't know that and some governments don't do that. When you go out for an R B, which is an R for, a request for a bid, you cannot negotiate. When you go on up for an RFP, you can still negotiate. So staff was successful in our building official. We actually lowered two of the tiers five percent in our negotiation, saving the town tens of thousands of dollars over the life of the contract. So just want to let you know that the prices actually came in cheaper than what you saw last month. Um, the, the um, the, the website's being revamped. Uh, we're looking at modifying some of our uh, and automating some of our code enforcement. Um, we're, we're actually redoing, um, there's a lanthana building, uh, utility building, eighteen hundred square feet. Um, we're putting a new roof on there. We're getting some bids on windows and doors. They're all, the numbers are coming in great. I can't even believe that. A re-roof job at eighteen thousand five, uh, which is not bad for, so numbers are coming out pretty good. Um, that was budgeted, so all doing well. We, we had a great monster truck uh, event. I, I thought it went well. Um, a few of you that, most of you were there and I've, you guys had smiles on your face, so I think it went well. Um, holiday decorating contest on the website was fun. The residents were really happy when we knocked on their door after nine o'clock and didn't get shot. But um, it was, it was a fun event. We have to change the date of the barbecue again. Um, uh, we, we had it on February eighth. We, we're going to change it to the Saturday, February fifteenth. We had some conflicts, so just want to let you know. Um, before we talk about the bridge, we had some great news. We talked about maybe asking the state and the county to help us and the county was great on this with helping us putting some signs on I ninety-five identifying the town. And we're going to get that on both north and south, um, Lake Clark short exits. And we got a, an example on there. They said within six months, so we'll see how that goes. Okay, the, 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 ending on a bad note is the bridge. It's frustrating. Um, the, the good thing is like what we said, that the contractor is responsive. Uh, it's, it's the third parties you're dealing with. You're dealing with the utility companies that take a long time to actually do what they need to do. And there's not, you're not paying them, so there's not a lot of recourse besides r- reporting them to the state agency. And with, with two hurricanes that just went through the state of Florida, th- those, those complaints are not going to go anywhere. So you have to keep working with them and to make sure that they get the work done. They are working. Um, they are proceeding. We did have to de- delay the demo a little bit, but the overall project is still planned to be done by July of next year. So.
Could you explain also, would you explain to me? Either people are saying, well, we should have already planned for the utilities. Well, each project, the utilities of moving the water isn't the same. So ours is unique. So you can't pre-plan that prior to the bid and prior to the contractor getting started. That's why people are, they should have all the dots in the row. But that, but each, each, each utility is different.
Great question. We, we actually did that. I mean, we had F P N L, that, they're out there weeks before. We had meetings six months before A T and T and Comcast and the gas company and all the vendors, the water, uh, the water company, which is us. Um, so what's your plan for the next six months to get this done? So F P N L actually moved the lines before the bridge was closed. I don't know if you know that. You know that. You live there. Uh, but the gas company, uh, they, uh, I'm, I'm not going to talk about a company. I said I wasn't going to do that. Some of the utilities would not do that. They, they'll, they'll do some of the planning, the permitting. They want the rails down. We couldn't open the bridge right now if you wanted to. The bridge, the rails are gone. You, you can't open the bridge. So they, they need to do, or they want to do the work when the bridge is closed because they're safe. So it's a frustrating time. I'm frustrated. Um, but the overall good news is it's still on schedule to be done in July of next year. And the contractor believes that soon as we get the third party things resolved, it's going to move. He, he believes, one of the things that we changed with one of the utilities, he says, will even, I'm not going to mention any utilities, will even expedite the process and even make it quicker. So that's my update. And everything's on the website.
So it has shifted back a month.
It, just the, just the demo delayed a couple of weeks, but not the overall project is, I know that says June in there, but it's.
I just want to, I mean, we're messaging a different month.
It's.
To our residents.
It, it's, it, it says June. His, his latest says July. I, I mean.
A month means a lot to people when they're frustrated. So I just want to be able to respond to it when they say, how come the newsletter says June? As I brought up to you, and now we're telling them July. It's just not a great look.
Yeah.
I just want to have a answer.
I, I might have got the June date before I even had that flow chart. So that.
Maybe.
Yeah, so I don't remember.
And technically, wasn't it ten months? So it was not really, it was even further. It was longer.
It's, you, they have three hundred and ten days.
Right.
Before they're fine, which is probably August or September. It's, and it's way past the June date, but they believe they're going to do it in two hundred and fifty days approximately. Don't quote me on the numbers of the days, but.
Don't put them in.
The, yeah, don't quote me on the June versus July, but it's, you know, you can't get it down to the exact date. Um, but everything is still, besides this for a little frustration with the utilities, everything is still working positively.
Trust me, when they start the demo, it's going to, the ball is going to just take off.
Right.
This is the, unfortunately, this is the slow part of construction. Once they start the demo, you're going to go, you're going to, you're going to blink an eye, you're going to think, why, why everything took so long to get to this point? Then it's going to seem like everything's just being fast-tracked. It, it's, it's frustrating. I, I'm just as frustrated as the residents are.
And so am I. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes, thank you, Joe.
Sure.
Okay. Let's move on to council comments. Christie, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I actually am quite impressed with the speed with which the staff accomplished that road sign. I brought it up, and I think it was at the last meeting. Um, that, why didn't we have a sign? I saw Palm Springs got a new sign and I said, why don't we have a sign? Talk about branding. And um, within like three weeks, this, the state said, great, we'll give you a sign. So uh, that, that was.
Six signs, six of them.
Yeah. Yeah. Excuse me. Um, uh, as for the bridge, I am enormously frustrated. And I am getting lots of calls and texts on it. Um, and it, uh, yes, I'm, I'm in the camp where I it's hard to, to see why, why the uh, bridge was closed. As, as early as it was, but we'll move on from that. Now, I know, Joe, that you've been keeping um, updates on the website, but you, you can't find them. I opened up every tab, clicked on every department. And finally, in the search engine, I had to type bridge and then looked through a series of articles. Could you keep, could you put the bridge updates, you know, in the same way that you kept everybody so beautifully informed uh, about the sewage spills? Could you put them on like even the, the homepage, the landing page?
It, it is on the homepage. It's on the, one of the five homepages, but I'll look at it again to see if it's easier uh, somehow to make it easier, but it's, it's like the third or second thing on the homepage and you just click.
Couldn't find it.
Okay.
And I had another, I had another resident call me up and say, where, where is it?
Elliot?
I, I think it should be.
We don't usually talk about communications this much.
I think it should be on the landing page. I mean, on the front page because it's such a, a hot button issue right now.
It is.
Um.
Should be the first thing.
Oh, by the way, uh, just let you go. I, I was at a, last Wednesday, the day after the election, I was at a groundbreaking. And Lois Frankel was there, uh, you know, hot, uh, hot on the heels of her reelection. And so I marched right up, up to her, introduced myself. And her first words were, how come you don't have that septic to sewer? I said, we're shovel ready. Get me some money. And um, and Lois said, oh, well, all right. No, let me go back to Washington, see what I can do for you. And then the, the fourth item I'd like to discuss is the railing on the bridge. And I gave some pictures to Emily. She could put up one at a time if you, if you don't mind, Emily.
Yes.
All right, so um, here we have Keller Bridge. All right, next one. Notice the railings in each picture. Okay, and there's West Lake. Next one, please. And um, uh, the Mediterranean and, and, and our beloved Pine Tree Bridge. They all have these um, very similar railings. Talk about branding. They're all similar. Uh, that are, are, and now for the, the last one, please. Okay, so this is what the, what, what we've approved. Now this to me looks like it belongs over a culvert in Locksahatchee. It does not look like it belongs anywhere in Pine, in, in um, Lake Clark, much less at the entrance of one of our two main streets. I know we had to rush to um, approve the bridge because we were going to lose the six hundred thousand matching grant. But I would like this group to, uh, not, we're not, I'm not asking for a vote. I'm just asking to give Joe permission to investigate a, a um, a more aesthetically pleasing railing than this hunk of cement and metal. I mean, frankly, we, somebody mentioned ribbon cutting earlier. I would be embarrassed to stand in front of this in, in July for ribbon cutting. So uh, could, would you all approve to have it, letting Joe investigate? We're not, I'm not asking to spend any extra money. We're just looking to see if, if there's some more aesthetically pleasing options.
Do you want me to say the Robert rules or let it go?
Well, the issue did come up and it was voted on. Uh, that doesn't mean you can't relook at it, but uh, the council voted to accept this design.
Well, actually not really, because the, the rendering that was given to us was quite different than this. Um, but Joe did say that with permission from the council that he would be authorized to at least explore as something that's more pleasing.
This is the rendering that you're putting out into the community that we're basing this off of?
Is it, I, is that the picture that was there? I.
No, this is another.
I mean, it looks different than that photo.
But it's probably similar, similar.
I'm, you know. Let's change order, plain and simple.
Well, again.
You can get options, of course.
We, we, I'm just, we're just exploring options. We're not, we're not, we're not voting to spend money.
That's, that's your call.
No, it's your call.
Well, if, I mean.
So we would be asking if they can, for the same amount of do, same amount of money, sorry, do something more aesthetically pleasing. And that's from your perspective, too.
Christie, what would you like to see different?
I don't think that looks like this.
No, I know, but that's what we're, that's what we, that's what we're buying right there.
That's the rendering.
No, no, that's the rendering. That's what we're buying. That's.
What would you like to see different?
Well, we have railings that you can see through. You have stone instead of hunks of concrete.
It's all about safety with the state. Um, obviously I can ask them if there's a change order and um, but if you look at the pictures, let me just tell you what's wrong with those obsolete pit, obsolete bridges. Can, can you go back a little? I mean, I mean, ki- kids can fall through that. So they're, and, and see how low it is. They're, that's why they want the height now. They want.
Well, then why aren't we changing every bridge to, to, in its, in town to be ugly?
Grandfathered in. It's, it's, as long as they're there, you can, they're grandfathered in, but new construction.
What you asked for.
Yeah, yeah. And, and again, the, I'll do whatever you all want me to do. Um, it's just not going to look like that because it'll probably be higher and it'll have to have less where you can squeeze kids.
Safety standards have changed.
Yes, they have. They, they, they have. So there's.
And I'm sure there's requirements and it wouldn't hurt you to ask like, what are the safety requirements? What are our guidelines?
I, I, I would ask what, what are the options on a more aesthetically pleasing rail?
With the same money and that meet all this. I'm good with that.
The same money? I don't, I don't, there's no change order that's the same money. Soon as you talk change order, it's more money.
Right. I think that's what we're going to come back and that will
Right.
At least make, you know, the request. She's asking for that, so.
Yeah.
I'm supportive of that request. I do think it's going to come back more expensive, but I'm supportive of asking.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chief, I think, I mean, Chief, I'm mayor, did you, I'm getting tired. Did you say yes?
I, you?
Yeah. If you say, three of you say yes, I'll do it.
Talk to them, see what they say.
Okay.
Don't spend any money.
No money, no more time, no more money.
Take a ride over there when they're not working and ask them, what can we do?
What are our options?
What are our options?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's see what they say. Are you?
Well, they have to.
Yes, I know we still have meetings.
Yeah, and we still have C R A.
Yeah, we still have a meeting and I.
We have another meeting?
Yes.
C R A.
Another meeting.
What?
That's why I was like calling for order.
I'm done. Thank you.
Good. Taylor?
Yes, I just, most importantly, congratulations, Bill. I think that's phenomenal. Thank you for everything that you've done for us for many, many years. Um, and I also want to commend the staff as I always do because you guys just had like a crazy, you know, Halloween and all of the fun festivities for Halloween and then election and that was just like run so perfectly. And just thank you for all of the extra effort that you um, put into everything right after the hurricanes. I mean, it was madness. So um, thank you for all of that and especially for listening to our concerns about paving and working on that to add it to the agenda. We appreciate that greatly.
Thank you.
I don't know how to follow that, but thank you, thank you again, staff. Staff, you got, we don't, you're, you're the lifeline of this uh, operation. Thank you for the community for trying to understand where we're coming from. Thank you, Joe, and you know, it doesn't go without saying, and Charlie, you're a part of the staff too. We, we can't do our job if we don't have the, the backbone behind us. So thank you for taking the heat and uh, you know, we'll take the heat on the other side. But thank, thank you, everybody, for all the hard work you've done with all the events that we were just, we discussed. And I'm sure the holidays coming up, you're going to have a few more.
I echo that. I would just encourage the residents, don't get discouraged. Keep coming to us, keep talking to us. We're listening. We're doing the best we can up here night in and night out. Um, so you know, we ask for your patience, but we also ask that you continue to come and share um, because we're listening. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm going to make this quick because we do have another meeting. But the importance of networking and Elliot, I'm very excited about the branding, the whole concept because the town of Lake Clark Shores is going to get stuck somewhere. And we're going to have to figure out some way to raise dollars. What you haven't said is the paving thing and everything, which who could be against the paving? Of course, it's a beautiful thing, but when you're trying to be responsible with limited funds, we've all seen the budget. We just passed the budget, so we've seen it. It's important that we work towards that C R A and part of our networking outside of the town of Lake Clark Shores is important when we get out there into the community and you go to somebody, hey, can I get a couple of signs on, you know, I ninety-five and bam, it happens. That's because they know us. They don't know you. It doesn't happen. You see the relationships you're building at the League of Cities. You see the relationships you're building in Tallahassee. That's going to move us forward for the children of the future and the future residents in Lake Clark Shores. I try not to be shortsighted in this position. I try to look at everybody's point of view. It's very difficult. Of course, we all have our own points of view as well. But in the overall scheme of things, the town of Lake Clark Shores is in a great position. We're respected out there. We're moving forward. We have hardworking council members, hardworking staff, police department. You get out there, it, it's a good reputation that we're getting from all of this networking. So.
And now we've got a street sign.
And now we got a street sign. Now they're really going to know where we are. You should put a toll road on there and say, hey, we paid these roads. There's a toll to come across that bridge, you know?
Yeah.
Bill, congratulations. I've known you a long time, sir. I respect what you do. You, you do a great job. You're a great volunteer and congratulations. Okay? Everybody that's here, I wished everybody would stay. I know it's late, but it's really not that late for one meeting, but happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Count all your blessings, life. Count all your blessings, life is very precious, tell the people that you love that you love them, because in an instant, that could change, so happy Thanksgiving, and everybody be with their families and be safe. Motion to adjourn?
Motion so moved.
Okay, thank you, let's move on.
I'm sorry, you can't make a motion and second at your own.
Help second, sorry, we're all getting tired.
At nine thirty, you can do that.
Listen, it's been a very emotional day, I don't even want to get, get me started.
I will second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving on, let's go to our CRA. We should be able to take care of this quickly, John. Roll call, please.
Chairman Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Vice Chairman John Maples.
Here.
Commissioner Bridget Keating.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor Materio.
Here.
Commissioner Christine Masbach.
Okay, do we have any audience comments? Elliot, we didn't put you to sleep, did we, sir? Okay, okay. You're doing a good job, too, I I follow you.
Branding research.
I do, I do follow your work, do we have anything on, no, no, okay. All right, so take a motion for approval of agenda.
Make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of consent?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
New business, this is approval of contract with Cooley or Inhearing for planning consulting services for Memorial Park, Pine Tree Park, and North Park Master Plan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for professional services with Cooley and Inhearing for the Memorial Park, Pine Tree Park, North Park Master Plan, not to exceed twenty six thousand four seventy five.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's, okay, item B, CRA goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty twenty five, Mr. Lovello.
John didn't let me brag that they they came in with thirty four thousand, twenty six thousand.
Way to go, Joe.
Emily and I did a good job.
And if, and if we cut the charrette, it's another four thousand saved.
All right, we we have a new state statute that requires us to do goals and objectives for the CRA, so all CRAs throughout the whole state, and they have to have performance measures. So to make a long story short, we have to put something on the website and actually do some measuring of these goals, so I came up with three of them, and so I need a motion if you'd like them, we can add to them. But the three are, the lighting project that, to finish the lighting project at Community Park, is to contract, which we just did, and consult with, for a master plan on all three parks. And the third thing is, as Elliot said, and I've said in the past, we're getting to be having a mature CRA where we can start looking at doing things, having staff or having a consultant. I don't know another CRA that doesn't have a consultant or staff, so that is a goal, we could start the research. Bring in Palm Springs as consultant or something like that, and just start talking to consultants on what services they can provide us to, to get us redeveloped in that area, to have quality development on our category, on our, on our corridor, and we're five miles from the airport, that's my slogan, you like that? Five miles from the airport, because for business development, five miles from the airport, you can live and work, so. So that's basically it, you guys like those goals, please vote on this motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Lake Clark shores community redevelopment agency goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty twenty five and place the information on the CRA website.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner comments, Christie?
Would the CRA have any role in the in the blue way?
No, not in the area, no.
No comments?
Can't think of any.
Good, thank you.
As always, I think it's an exciting time to be a CRA commissioner in Lake, Lake Clark shores. Big things coming.
I echo, I'm re-energized, and hopefully we can move forward with this plan as well as coming up with a branding and slogan, I think that we're on the right track between cleaning up the waterways and the roadways, I think it all, all the dots are lining up.
Elliot, thank you for being here and collecting all this data, I'm sure you're gonna use it to the town advantage, thank you.
I couldn't agree with you, we worked really hard to get to where we are today, just to even get this ERA, it was a long, hard road, but we got it, here we are, let's continue to move forward. Okay, anybody else, you guys good, you're over there, you're ready to go?
We're good.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, everybody, safe travels.
Everyone.